That's your brother. That's for you. That's not the one.
She probably doesn't. Oh, and my son-in-law.
We're going to call to order this meeting of the Winter City Council for Tuesday, June 19th at 6:30 PM. I can't believe this might be the last time I say this, but roll call Nancy.
Councilmember Anderson.
Here.
Biase.
Here.
Lauren.
Here.
New.
Here.
Mayor Cowan.
Here. Mike Sebastian, will you lead us in the pledge?
Absolutely. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with every right and justice for all.
Thank you. Okay. Approval of the agenda. John.
Mayor and council, no changes to the agenda.
I move we accept the agenda.
I second that.
Motion. Okay. Motion in the second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Pose. Motion carries unanimously. Okay. Council staff comments. Councilmember Lauren.
Right. June 7th, I attended the environmental policy meeting for the League of California Cities in Sacramento. We looked at the Water Quality Act. We have. Offers a 2.5% rate savings and provides local control and sustainability. June 11th, I attended the Winter Senior Project Task Force and met and participated in the Age Friendly Communities presentation with the AARP, which looks to support age-friendly community alignment in winters. We would be the first of the rural cities to join. June 11th, also had a phone conference with the League of California Cities Sacramento region, and we are planning a rural cities alliance at the next league conference. We also have an upcoming regional meeting in Shasta on July 20th, excuse me. On June 12th, Mayor Pro Tem Biase and I attended the Yolo County Cannabis Land Use Ordinance Meeting at City Hall Conference Center, which provided updated ordinance information and sought input from the community. On June 14th, Bill and I attended Gratitude in the Grove, a fundraising and informational meeting about the Yolo Food Bank. June 15th, I met with Hispanic Advisory Committee, and we have dates for our next Immigration Citizenship Forum in July. It'll be July 9th here at City Hall for an appointments workshop, and the actual appointments will be on July 14th at the Community Center. On June 16th, I attended the VCE Board Member Lucas Ferrick's presentation on Valley Clean Energy, and I mentioned most of that information earlier. Later in the afternoon, I attended the memorial for Julia Milan. On June 18th, I attended the Winter Senior Project Task Force meeting at City Hall to work further on AARP, Age Friendly Communities, and new senior transportation to Walmart. I also attended the WRA and Yolo Sustainable Groundwater Association Board meetings, and we discussed the six adverse influences that can impact Sigma. Also, a measurement well was added to Golden Bear to keep track of what's happening there while the land below them is being developed with permanent crops. Thank you for the opportunity to serve winters.
Okay. Councilmember Anderson.
Thank you, Mayor. On Monday, June 11th, in the evening, I attended the Yolo County Transportation District meeting in Woodland, and one of the discussions was about a Build It Grant, which is something to do with Electrify America, and it looks like a strong possibility that there will be six electric buses coming to the Transportation District in Yolo County, and six for regional transit in Sacramento. And in conjunction with the University of California Davis, they're going to be serving the Med Center in Sacramento. On Tuesday, June 12th, checked in on the Downtown Car Show. Wednesday, Jan. 13th, attended the Yolo Solano Air Quality Management District meeting in Davis. Morning meeting. And Thursday, June 14th, attended the Lower Pewter Creek Coordinating Committee meeting in Vacaville.
Okay. Councilmember Ne.
On June 7th, I went to the SECOG Land Use Natural Resources meeting in Sacramento, and we had speakers to talk about some of the things coming up in changes of land use or possible zoning. On the 6th, 6/12, I caught the end of the car show. On 13th, I went to the Yolo County Housing Meeting in Woodland, and it was a short meeting. We didn't have too much on the agenda, but it was important that we honored a couple people and that we were able to approve a budget, which was our main thing that we had to do for the evening. And then on the 18th, I attended the Yolo Habitat Conservancy meeting in Woodland, and we are waiting until August 20th will be the date at which we are hoping that we will actually be able to issue permits, but that's not final yet. Always, always, almost there. So that's it.
Okay. Mayor Pro Tem Biase.
Thank you, Mayor. On June 8th, I attended the Chamber Board Meeting, where we had some discussion on the ongoing search for their new executive director position. On the 12th of June, I attended the Cannabis Outreach Meeting put on by the county here. So look for that land use ordinance to be coming forth later this year on where they'll let people grow, which might affect us right around the edge of our city limits. On the 13th, I attended the Parking Committee Meeting, where we're working to finalize the report, should be coming before the council soon. And the 14th, I also attended the Yolo Food Bank Gratitude in the Grove, discussion on their new building that they're putting up, still fundraising, so if anyone wants to donate. On the 18th, I met with the city manager for the agenda review.
Okay. I had an easy couple of weeks with a bunch of grandkids and nephews graduating, but on the 12th, I was at the car show, and the 13th at the parking meeting, and on the 18th, I met with the city manager. So thank you, everybody, for all your hard work, and now we'll move to public comment. At this time, any member of the public may address the council on non-agenda items. Is there anybody that would like to speak on a non-agenda item? Now is the time.
Oh, yeah. It's on. Hi, guys. How are you? Hi, everybody. I wanted to.
Give us your name.
Oh, thank you. My name is Carla Roten, and I'm the owner of Steady Eddies with my husband Mel. Today, I'm here just to actually introduce you guys to Steady Eddies, if you guys don't know us already, but as you guys know, the town is growing, and we're just asking for a lot of your support, and we already have a lot of your guys' support. I see most of you guys in our shop every night, but I wanted to share with you guys that the Chamber Discover Winters is actually changing, but I think it's going to be an exciting change, and you're going to see a lot of businesses networking more, and so look forward to that. So thank you, guys. I appreciate that.
Thank you. Is there anybody else that would like to speak to a non-agenda item? Okay. Seeing none, we'll move on. Consent calendar, John.
Mayor and council, a couple of items. Item A, the minutes from the regular meeting on June 5th. Item B are a couple of items dealing with the Winter Highlands Project, now known as Stones Throw for Phase 1 of the subdivision. There are actually three items. One is development addition, conditions of approval to make it consistent with all agreed upon terms with the project. The second item has to do with an irrevocable offer of dedication, which correlates to all the major infrastructure that goes in. Tonight, you're going to, we, is the discussion, we have the Calhoun Estates, and basically the same items on there. It was a requirement of the development agreements. The third is approving the final map for the project. Item C is a street maintenance contract with Vintage Paving of Winters, California. This is for the expenditure of SB 1 monies, and will include. Item D are some repairs to the Carter Ranch Lift Station, fixing the impellers for the wet well over there. Item E, staff is actually pulling out of this item, the memorandum of understanding. We're going to bring those together to the council collectively. With, there are actually three others that go with it at the July meeting, but staff's asking that the council approve the associated job descriptions and the salary schedule. And that's the consent calendar.
Okay. If there's no discussion, we'll entertain a motion with the consent calendar.
I move to approve the consent calendar.
Second.
Okay. We have a motion in second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Pose. Motion carries unanimously. Okay. Now we're moving on to presentations, and first, we're going to have a recognition of Rebecca Friday. And if you've been a kid going to school in winters over the last 30 years, you know who Rebecca is because you probably had her for a teacher. And if there's anybody that is the face of Friends at the Library, it's Rebecca, without a doubt. And she's being honored tonight for her dedication to the Yolo County Library Advisory Board for over 30 years of service on that board. John?
Tonight, I think we actually have a couple of folks coming up, and why don't, why don't they start coming up right now, and we'll turn the show over to them. I will share with you that Rebecca, the first meeting that I ever went to as city manager of Winters was, was it Measure B? It was probably Measure B, and there was a very passionate woman who was sitting next to me, and she actually corrected a report that I was working on as I was sitting there. It's like, who the heck is this? And later, I found out that it was Rebecca. At that time, we were looking to build a library, and fast forward five years, we were at the grand opening of the Winters Community Library, which without question, Rebecca and actually Woody were some of the key people in making it happen. So commitment does pay off 30, it only took you 30 years. Actually, 24 years. Good. But anyway, why don't we introduce some of the folks? Well, why don't we start, we'll go down the pecking order. We have our past mayor, current assembly person.
It is an honor tonight to present this resolution to you, Rebecca, for so many reasons, but first of all, I want to say is that this is the first one that I've actually come out to a community to do. I just, my time is so crazy, but I knew that tonight was really important to me, and I hope it was important to you. I want to thank you for all that you've done for the community, not just at the schools, but with the library, but you have been a good role model for students. You have had them reach out farther throughout their lives, have a vision in what they do, and many of us in the community are so grateful for what you've done. I think they're going to miss, I know they're going to miss you over at the school, but we'll miss you at the library. And all the years you worked on that, and I remember at one time, someone said to you, aren't libraries going to be extinct at some time? And you said, no, they'll never. Many of us, I think, in this room would have ever thought. So with that, on behalf of the California State Assembly, we have a resolution to honor you. I don't really appreciate reading all the wheresses because I know that it makes you really uncomfortable, and we all know what's going on, but be it resolved that we, the State Assembly, honor all the work that you've done and then how you've kept children in the forefront, and that that is one of the goals that we all do have in this California State Assembly. So thank you so very much.
You have done this before.
One more. Stay up. Cecilia.
Cecilia.
You got one more.
No. Get the whole crew. I'll hold him.
Good evening, Mayor and members of the city council. My name is Mark Fink, and I'm the Yolo County Librarian, and I'm here to just recognize all the work that Rebecca has put into supporting the work of the county library, and more specifically the work that she's done here in winters locally with the Library Advisory Board, with the schools, and also with the Friends of the Library. I'm relatively new in my position, so I can't speak to all of the great things that Rebecca has done for the community, but I've been told many, many great stories by former county librarians about your commitment to the library and the commitment to winters. One thing, I just did a little bit of quick math, and so Rebecca joined the Library Advisory Board in 1985. If you consider the average amount of time that our board meets and how often we meet, Rebecca has put in 495 hours of time just at library meetings. So that's not even the fun part. That's just the, that's just her commitment for winters to make sure that winters is represented in county decisions revolving, or involving the library. So, and you must be really exhausted from all those.
They're always fun.
So I want to thank you, and I wish you best of luck in your future travels.
Supervisor Saylor, you almost missed it.
I know, Mr. Mayor. This reminds me of the time I showed up to swearing Mike Martin to the board of the Solano Community College Foundation Board, and boy, I was almost late for that. I don't know what you've done so far, but I'm just so delighted to present to Rebecca Friday on behalf of the Yolo County Board of Supervisors a Resolution 18-63. We passed it unanimously, I want you to know, and it's signed by Chair Oscar Villegas. I don't usually read all of these things, but this one is actually pretty amazing. Mark, did you already share this?
Yeah.
Okay. Very good. Well, you know, Rebecca has honorably represented, it says here, the city of winters, but I think we all know that it's a much broader representation. When someone from winters serves on a county board, you're actually representing a broader community, all of the, all the greater winters, is what we like to refer to it as. You've been an active participant and leader, most recently as vice chair, and during that time that she's been serving since 1985, we've built two new libraries and remodeled three of them. One of the ones that was built is the one here in winters, and Rebecca was the key community facilitator for bringing the ideas and the desires and perspectives of people from the Winters Unified School District and the broader winters community to the planning process. That's a once-in-a-lifetime opportunity for most of us. She, Rebecca has shared her gifts and leadership with the winters friends of the library. In addition to this, she's recognized as a civic activist. She weaves the love of learning, the environment, and literacy into the fabric of the winters community, and she joyfully brings the community together as an inspiration to many of us. So Rebecca, thank you so much for your service on the Library Advisory Board and for just being who you are in our community.
She'll be, she'll be representing winters again at the event tomorrow.
Again, thank you so much, Rebecca, for all you've done for winters and community and all our kids, and thank you so much. You're welcome. Okay. One more recognition. Nancy Mills. Town, it's Nancy Mills. And all she's done for this community over 32 years is nothing short of amazing with, you know, you couldn't rent the community center, you couldn't get on swim team, you couldn't, there's pretty much nothing you could do without getting past Nancy and being the HR director, and it's like, you didn't get hired in this town without Nancy. You didn't get sworn in without Nancy. So I'm not quite so sure yet what we're going to do without you. That's for sure. We're going to miss you a lot.
Thank you very much. I'll miss you guys as well.
John?
So we, we actually slid this on the agenda. Nancy found out that this was on the agenda at about 5:30 today. She's going through her notes, and, you know, we finalized the agenda, she green-lighted it. Tracy just went with it, and I walked out to Tracy, I go, just slide it on the agenda, she'll never know. And she, she's standing in my doorway this, this afternoon going, when did you put that on the agenda? We put it on last week. So 32 years, and tonight is presumably, unless we have some type of a disaster or something that we have to call a special meeting, it'll be the culmination of her service as city clerk at this meeting. Nancy started at the city 32 years ago, so in, in 1986, and she became the city clerk in 1988. Some fun facts, 1986, the average house in winters sold for $89,000 for a brand-new house. Gallon of gas was 89 cents. You could buy a brand-new Ford Mustang for $7,452. That was the year of Chernobyl. The space shuttle Challenger disaster, Oprah Winfrey started her show. Halley's Comet went across the world, and Hands Across America was that year. Top Gun was the number-one movie that year. The Dow Jones Industrial Average closed that year at $1,895 for all you with retirement account. And the federal interest rate that year was 7.5%. So 1988 was when Nancy became the city clerk. And if you went to her first meeting, and I think there is somebody in this room who was at her first meeting, you would have found Robert Chapman was the mayor, Perry Beck was the city manager, and on the city council was a very spry and young Keith Friday, Bob Harris, Roger Mosher, and Joe Gando Sr. That was the council, and the council meetings were held upstairs in the conference room. So here, here's a perspective of what 30 years as the city clerk for the city of winters means. Went through 720 regular city council meetings, 29 meetings for the 1992 general plan. I would imagine Woody had something to do with all those 29 meetings. There were over 128 special meetings of the city council, and during the development years of 2004 to 2006, we had 27 special city council meetings just for those. So you add it all up, 904 city council meetings is the city clerk for the city of winters. In regular days, that's two and a half years, or two years, 182 days is the city clerk coming to city council meetings. And I don't think you're getting any of that time back. Hopefully, you will. Without question, Nancy has been the cornerstone of this organization for so long. She has provided a very steady and quiet influence for this city, and without question, I think many people will know that whenever I, as the city manager, go away, we have to designate an acting city manager, and that has, that has been Nancy when she's in the, when there wasn't a conflict. There is probably nobody in the history of winters who really has had that steadying influence if you add it all up. Hey, did you ever do a special election? I couldn't figure that out. So.
I can't remember one.
I don't think there was any special elections.
What was that? What was Menor's?
It's not important.
Anyway. Anybody who goes through 15 election cycles and the number of city council members, the mayor's right, I think practically every city council member during those 30 years was sworn in by Nancy, and without question.
What's the number on that, John? How many people she's sworn in?
You know what? I, we will, we will have that number. We are going to have a retirement party for Nancy.
It's a tight race between council and fire.
But anyway, you know what? We, Tracy and I debated whether we were going to have you write your own proclamation for tonight or not. As we've debated, we think that Nancy has probably had enough proclamations in her life, so we didn't put anything together, but we did want to do the most important thing, and we decided to have cake tonight, so. Just, probably the only thing that we are going to give up is we did get flowers. These are not for me, but we decided to just give her flowers.
Thank you very much.
And.
That's great. Oh, gosh. It's really sweet.
Clean the floor on your own thing. Better yet.
Yeah, don't we pay somebody less than we're paying him?
Okay, we're gonna call a meeting back to order here at seven oh eight. And we're gonna start with discussion item number one, which is a public hearing and wait the second reading, and adoption of ordinance twenty eighteen oh two concerning implementation of the Yolo HCP. John?
Mayor and council, this is an item that you've already seen before. Actually, you would've seen it sooner, but we didn't get the advertisement in the paper. Tonight's just second reading on an adoption for ordinance twenty eighteen oh two, which will adopt the Yolo HCP, NCCP-related procedures and fees as it relates to the city of Winters. Not much to say, it's probably one of the largest documents ever put together in the history of winter, or of Yolo County. As I said before, enough can't be said. Our former mayor sat on the HCP group, council member Friday did, and now council member new...
Bruce Gould, way back?
Yeah, Bruce Gould, well, he was an alternate. But anyway, tonight is the adoption and of this ordinance. That's recommending that you hold the public hearing and then go ahead, wait the second reading and adopt the ordinance.
Okay, does anybody have any comments before we open the public hearing? Open the public hearing at seven oh nine. Is there anybody that would like to address us about the HCP? Anyone? The Yolo HCP. Habitat Conservation Plan. Seeing none. Close the public hearing at seven ten. Just no further comment or questions? We can entertain a motion.
I'd be happy to. I move that the council approves this... Ordinance, thank you. And, and that's it. Twenty eighteen, I need the number, I was just going through. I move that council approves the ordinance twenty eighteen...
Oh, two.
I'll second it.
Okay, they have a motion and a second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Okay, item number two, public hearing and approval of Newt's Expressway Rule Twenty A Utility Underground District.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I'm gonna recuse myself.
So noted. Scared him off.
Yeah. First of all, I'm Alan Mitchell with Ponachio Enterprises, City Engineer. We've been here nineteen years working with Nancy, and we consider her a friend, we respect her. Nick and I are gonna miss you a lot.
Thank you very much, I'll miss you too.
We might see you down at the local bar, though, you never know.
You might.
So for the last ten years, we've been trying to get the overhead lines down there in Newt's Alley, across the street, undergrounded. Every time you walk by, you just shake your head and go, "Those are the ugliest things I've ever seen." And, you know, a lot of downtowns, historic downtowns have that situation. PG&E kept shaking their head no, and fortunately, in two thousand fourteen, the city entered into an agreement for a hotel across the street, and that design created an opportunity for us with some pedestrian access. PG&E re-looked at it, we hired Harrison Associates and Rocco sitting behind me to help us. Rocco used to work for PG&E, Rocco specializes in this type of program district. And he hit the ground running and talked, we talked them into it in March of two thousand seventeen, or recently, they said, "Yeah, you guys can head down this path." So with that, we wanted to come to council and set up this district. The Rule Twenty A is a tariff program, and each year, the city has allocated some funds. It's about sixteen or seventeen grand a year. It's not a lot for Winters, it's based on the number of meters. We have about four hundred and seventy-three thousand currently on credit, it's not real money, it's just on paper. And, but we can borrow up to five years to get us up about five hundred and sixty thousand. So what we can do is we can use that paper money to start the program of trying to get those utilities undergrounded. And so with that, we have a boundary that I'd like to show you, it's the boundary map. So the boundary is basically that block where the hotel is, the alley. So this is the boundary map, so this is the official boundary map, and it shows where the undergrounding district, what it entails. And then, there's the next drawing, is the conceptual plan. And I'm gonna call Rocco up in a minute, and he'll run through the conceptual plan with the technical nuances of what goes where and why. But basically, we're coming before you tonight, we wanna conduct a public hearing for the Rule Twenty A district. We want you to adopt the resolution to authorize the city manager to execute an agreement with PG&E, and create an underground district, and also to allow him to sign other documentation as we go through the process. So let me call Rocco up just to have him run through this quickly and explain what the Rule Twenty A process will be before we open the public hearing.
Okay. Hello, Eric Council? My name is Rocco Plicky, I'm with Harrison Associates. If you look at, thank you, otherwise I can use my outside voice. If you look at the conceptual map, what we have in mind is to underground all of the ordinance facilities along Newt's Alley between Railroad and First Street. Those facilities would be undergrounded, electric, telephone, and cable. We've looked at the street plans as we know them. There appears to be plenty of space to put in a joint trench, some creative ways of putting in a joint trench, which would bring the pole in the corner of Newt's Out, Newt's Expressway, and First Down. The riser pole would be somewhere behind the drugstore, between City Hall and the drugstore. So that thing gets undergrounded. And then the length along First Street from the alley to Abbey would also be undergrounded with the riser pole somewhere next to the corrugated building on the corner. There'll be two to three padmont transformers that we'll have to locate, one in the parking lot on Railroad, another within the parking lot at First, then Newt's Out. The undergrounding allocation will pay for the PG&E share. So the PG&E share is just gonna be along the alley. I've already talked to both the telephone company and cable company, and they've agreed that they will do on First Street as, we just believe, as a town request or a city requested underground. Okay? So inasmuch as they don't have a Rule Twenty with an allocation and budget, since it's requested by the town and it's part of the overall undergrounding, then they'll follow suit with PG&E. The property owners will have to pay for their own conversions. There is an option within Rule Twenty A to fund some of that, but then it takes away from the undergrounding that you do in the street. So it's only one pot of money if you spread it out too often, too many places, and it just reduces the amount of undergrounding. So my suggestion would be just have the property owners fund their own service conversions, and then maximize how much gets undergrounded from the allocation. The first step in the process, rather, the next step, would be pass the resolution so that PG&E will actually put this project in their queue, where you start talking about design, you start talking about getting it built. So the first step in the undergrounding process is to pass the resolution.
Okay. Anybody got any questions?
We have a public hearing?
Yeah, we'll do that, too.
I'll do comments after the public hearing.
Okay. I got a couple of questions. We're talking about underground and everything in the alley, and what we're talking about in the Rule Twenty money, that's gonna get everything from First to Railroad, correct? And then you're coming across the street, down the street a little bit?
Not quite. The Rule Twenty money will cover the alley.
Okay.
Okay, that's specific to PG&E, that's the electric. PG&E's allocation, the allocation that you receive is from PG&E for undergrounding PG&E's facilities. Telephone and cable, undergrounds under the same rules, but they don't have an allocation. And then cable undergrounds under provision of the franchise.
Okay, do we know what the cost from phone and cable is? Do you know that?
Since the city's requesting the undergrounding, they're gonna fund the undergrounding.
Like that part. You were talking about timeframe, once this thing gets green-lighted. What do you expect that timeframe from PG&E to be? When would they actually be out there digging a trench?
Usually it takes a year or two. And there's some options in terms of who builds the trench.
But since you worked for them, you can probably cut that down to a month or two.
I'll try.
No.
I'll try. The good thing is, is that I've been talking quite a bit to Keith Bass, he's the local PG&E representative for undergrounding. He's actually reminded me to say, "When are we gonna get a resolution so that we can put this in queue?" So that's a kind of a different perspective than, certainly than I'm used to, actually being a little bit more proactive to say, "Get it into the queue." If the city takes the trench lead and the design lead, you can actually move the process faster.
Meaning, we dig the trench ourselves?
We dig the trench. We dig the trench, we do the engineering.
All they do is push wire.
Right. PG&E pulls the wire, the other utilities follow suit. So it just kind of moves it along, then we're not at the university of PG&E's construction schedule. It gives you much more control over the project.
Yeah, I'm familiar with that process. Okay. All right, then I guess if nobody else got any questions, I'll open the public hearing. Open the public hearing at seven twenty. Is there anybody that would like to speak to this item? Okay, seeing none. Close the public hearing at seven twenty in ten seconds. Okay, is there any further comments?
Yeah, so you said that five hundred and some thousand that's available will start, that's what I think, Alan. How much are we looking at to do all this? If that's only a start, just ballpark. You said the five hundred and some thousand is enough to get started and?
Well, it's enough to do.
Is enough to do everything? Or still?
It's, it'll be enough, it'll be enough to get most of the alley done. Most of, most of First Street done. For the portion that remains, if there's a remainder, I'm sure there would be, then the idea is to pass it, to fund it through an assessment district. So you'd end up with a combination, Rule 20 is made of a three parts, an A, B, and a C, effectively. So the A would, you'd maximize the A. If there was anything that needed to be done beyond the A, that's not funded by the allocation, then you would fund that through an assessment district.
Okay, so that's part of why we're forming this association in order to then start the framework for getting some dues that would come from property owners that would be along there. And I think, John, you've mentioned that you've talked to property owners along there and they're on board or?
Yeah, we, we had a meeting with all the property owners and they came in and, and you know, it was one of our typical meetings with all the downtown property owners on, on things. And the, the question that everybody asks is, well, how much is this going to cost?
Yeah.
The good news is, is we have Rocco and Alan on this thing. They're working with the property owners. The best part of the meeting, frankly, was, you know, we, we don't know everything that's out there right now as far as the capability of, of utilities. For example, three-phase power is critically important. And it was very interesting to have some of the, the property owners say, yep, I got three-phase, I've got three-phase. Because honestly, it determines the, the capability of every single one of the buildings. As Rocco and Alan will work with them as they do the assessment of overall costs, the property owners will have to pay for themselves for some of the improvements. And in some cases, it may be an opportunity for them to upgrade their, their services in a pretty affordable way.
And the other comment I had is just the timing wise is not very good because I'm hoping by a year or two years, which is when you say they might be able to do it, the hotel will be done before that. And we, we need to have that alley paved before that. So that means we're going to have to go in and, so they'll be able to put the trench in and do some paving, or they're going to have to tear some of that paving out?
What we'd like to be able to do is to at least get confirmation from the utilities of how much, how much conduit, how many boxes they actually need to have along the alley. So even if the, the main design isn't all the way complete, if we can get enough information so that we can get all the infrastructure in before the paving, that would be.
Right. That'd be great.
You know, because nobody wants to open the street.
Exactly. Thank you.
Yeah, and I think from my experiences, I'm pretty confident that Eric and our staff can rough that stuff in for less money than PG&E would charge anyway.
Yep.
And that, and, and we could get it done sooner, like, like you're talking about, is we could get it done, get it put in before we, before we pave. And then they just come, when, when they come and push wire, you know, panels get switched and, but, you know, I, because I think what Bill's saying is kind of vitally important to us. We'd like to see that alleyway finished off as towards the end of this hotel. So I think, you know, we do everything we can to make, make that part happen.
Yep.
So, okay. Jesse, you got anything?
I'm ready to make a motion.
Okay. Anybody else got anything to say? Go ahead.
All right. I move to adopt a resolution authorizing the city manager to execute an agreement with PG&E to convert overhead facilities to underground for the project area identified as the alley between First and Railroad as stated.
Second. Okay, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously with Councilmember Anderson recusing himself. Okay, next we have a public hearing to receive input from specific property owners regarding implementation of weed abatement for twenty eighteen.
Mayor and Council, a quick item on this one. I won't steal Gene's thunder unless he wants to.
Thank you, guys.
And, and give it. Tonight's the public hearing. The city council's already heard from us as far as the implementation of our twenty eighteen weed abatement program. Tonight is the public hearing for any property owners who would like to come up and express an opinion or whatever they want to do regarding this year's program. So tonight is just a public hearing for them to come and speak if they want to.
Okay. Open the public hearing at seven twenty-five. Would anybody like to talk about the weeds?
Start the whistle.
Seeing none. Well, close the public hearing at seven twenty-six. The first one on the list.
The first one on the list, actually. Thank you very much, Dean Ashdown. I just wanted to mention that I think it's really important that we time the abatement letters with waste management, street cleaning, to make sure that all of the piles that are on the larger properties, especially the ones that back up to the creek, you know, the longer parcels, have pickup. And they did this time, but meant several truckloads, at least on my street alone, coming out. So I just want to make sure that when we look at calendars for waste management, that it's not a, a pickup week for the container, that it's definitely within two weeks of the abatement letters, that it's actually a street pickup day. That's my request.
Motion for this? No? No? Okay, just a public hearing. Okay, moving on. Public hearing and waive the first reading and introduce ordinance twenty eighteen oh three. Various zoning text amendments to Title seventeen.
I will be recusing myself on this.
Okay. Regarding non-conforming uses, structures, and lots.
Dave? So, do you have anything to add before you tonight? It has to do with the process that began in two thousand seventeen when Nick Germani, who's sitting behind me here, came before the city wanting to do an addition to his house that backs up to Dry Creek at five oh eight Abbey. And we found out that after the homes were built along that stretch of Dry Creek, the city adopted the ordinance that's in place now that calls for a twenty-five foot, fifty foot setback, as much as a hundred foot setback, from the creek top of bank. And it's very vague in the ordinance, but that's how it's written. So what it turned out is that his house, along with virtually all the houses along Dry Creek, are non-conforming because they encroach into the creek setback. So we, we embarked on a series of study sessions with the planning commission, looking at two issues. One was creek setbacks and, you know, the sort of the arbitrariness of the regulation that we have, that it really doesn't give you any ground rules as to how you determine the top of bank or, you know, why is it fifty feet? Why is it a hundred feet? Why couldn't it be something that varies depending on the particular lot in question? And then we also looked at the whole issue of non-conforming structures. And that issue became one that was easier to sort of get our arms around. Written today, you cannot add a second story addition or any addition vertically from above an existing first floor that if the first floor encroaches into a setback. In other words, our ordinance says non-conforming structure, you cannot add on to it if the addition is also going to be non-conforming as well. During our investigation of other cities, which we mentioned in your staff report, we found that many cities allow a, an extension that doesn't intensify the discrepancy that already exists. So in other words, if, if your first floor's got a five-foot encroachment and you built straight up, you're still going to have a five-foot encroachment on the second floor. You're not making the situation worse. And so again, somewhat inspired by Mr. Germani coming forward and talking about an addition to his house, we looked into the bigger picture of non-conforming structures in general. And the planning commission, as you've seen in your staff report, still had some issues with creek setbacks. We're still working on that issue and we decided to sort of bifurcate the process and allow the non-conforming issue to come forward. And if, if the council were to approve the change that's being recommended in this, in your staff report, Mr. Germani will be able to go forward with an addition to his existing house without the need of a variance. And I think that's real positive. But again, it's not just homes along the creek. It's anywhere in town that you would have a non-conforming structure, be it residential, be it commercial, be it industrial. They all would have the same ability to add on as long as they don't make the situation worse. And so that's what's been. Be some of the other cities wording. So with that, I'll try to answer any questions.
Okay, anybody got any questions?
I have a, I have a question for clarification. So if I'm understanding this right, that setback was put into place after a lot of these homes were built, is that right?
Correct. His, his home was built in nineteen eighty-nine.
Yeah.
The ninety-two general plan, which then turned into a zoning ordinance change, happened after that. So Nick's dad is an architect and he took the liberty of sort of showing us where the footprints of a number of houses were in relation to Mr. Germani's house and virtually every house along Dry Creek from.
Yeah.
Grand Avenue all the way to the bridge, all encroaching to that fifty-foot setback that exists today. So making it impossible for him, but anybody else for that matter, to add on to the back of their house.
So they can go up but not?
He can go up.
Back towards the creek. Thank you.
And just to give you the absurdity, only about the first ten feet of his house is actually outside the creek setback, which wouldn't make a very attractive second floor.
Yeah.
That's.
Yeah, thank you.
Well, I, I think this applies, like you said, to a lot more places than just along the creek with the whole non-conforming thing, especially with the age of our downtown. And a lot of these older houses, there's house after house within a block in here that are non-conforming to one rule or another. So, you know, I definitely see the benefit of making the adjustment you're talking about making, because I, I think it puts a real strain on, on a lot of properties, not just along the creek.
Yeah, I, I just, as I said, it just, once I started looking into it, it just made common sense, I guess.
Yeah.
To not make people apply for a variance for the simplest sake of just applying. This way they can do stuff to their house without.
So this is dealing with the non-conforming. And then you still got to deal with the setbacks. And then what's the plan for that?
Well, so, one of the things that we got hung up on the, the planning commission level about this was, how do you address non-main structure additions into the creek setback? In other words, gazebo's, swimming pools, sheds, even decks that are a certain distance above the ground. And we sort of got hung up on as to who would be the deciding body. Would it be done at a, at a staff level at a public hearing, where actually have a zoning administrator position that exists in the code? Or would it be done at the planning commission level? And I was been, I had researched it. Some cities do it at administrative level, some cities do it at a planning commission level. A lot of what I found was that the bigger cities tend to do it at administrative level. The smaller cities tend to do it at a planning commission or zoning.
And in between there, we have the Design Review Committee.
And we have the Design Review Committee. So long story short, I was, I was supposed to propose something to the commission, ultimately maybe to the council, as to how do we address those non-main structure issues? And then Valerie Whitworth, who's not here tonight, one of the concerns she had was, you know, if you just allow everybody to encroach into that setback and not knowing the rationale for why the fifty-foot setback was established, and maybe looking at a better way to deal with protecting the creeks, you might be opening Pandora's box. So that was the other issue, was, is, is there a way to investigate the setback requirement and come up with a better way to quantify it? Because I think a lot of you know, for example, in the First Street, in Wolf's Gilt, Peter Creek, there's a series of tiers, plateaus of the creek and its width. And so if me, as just a fairly trained person, look at it, I'm not sure where you decide the top of bank is. Is it top of bank in June? Is it the top of bank in December? You know, those kind of things. So that was the other thing. Can we do a better job of defining how we measure our setbacks? And, and the cities besides ours that have creeks, a lot of them do. They've got diagrams, they've got, you know, this many feet above this, this many feet away from them. And what time of year do you do it? And all that kind of stuff. So that was the other hangup, is how do we address the whole issue of creek setbacks as it pertains to the main structure, let alone these accessory buildings?
So that's something you're still looking into?
Something I'm still looking into and haven't completely stopped. It just sort of comes and goes as, as the time is available to do it.
Yeah, sure.
Okay. It's all right, everybody, open the public hearing. We'll do the public hearing at seven thirty-six. Is there anybody that'd like to speak to this issue? Dave?
I just want to say how much I appreciate Dave's work on all this. He's been very patient with, with us and very open-minded and look forward to continuing to work with him. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anybody else that'd like to speak to this item? Okay, seeing none. Close the public hearing at seven thirty-six and a half. Okay, does anybody got any further comments or somebody that'd like to make a motion or?
Yeah, I just would like to say that, yeah, I definitely want to give you direction to look into further these others, other accessory structures that might set into that setback area. Because I mean, I think part of the reason having that setback along there is, there's erosion issues to think about, definitely. Even though I know there's a lot of non-conforming structures out already, but we don't want to make sure if we're approving any future ones that we're doing it in a thoughtful way. So, thank you. I can, I'll make a motion. I'll move that we approve ordinance number twenty eighteen dash oh three, amending Chapter seventeen point one oh four in the Winters Municipal Code and schedule a second reading and adoption for July seventeenth, twenty eighteen, and that we find the proposed amendments categorically exempt from SEQA Guideline Section fifteen three oh one.
Second. We have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously with Councilmember Lauren recusing herself due to conflict of living along the creek. Okay, Jesse? And we're moving on. Item number five. Public hearing and consideration of the proposed First Amendment to the amended and restated Development Agreement and tentative subdivision map for Callahan Estates subdivision.
So I, the city manager.
Back again.
Maybe Eric will chime in on this one. I'm, I'm sort of shepherding this process, but I wasn't involved as much in the negotiation process. In fact, virtually not at all. If you see the smallest of the green squares, which I can point to, but Nancy could probably too, of the house, it's right in the center of the, keep going down, Nancy.
Left square.
There, one right over.
Hey.
So that's what we call parcel E. And that is supposed to be a mini park and is part of the Callahan Estates subdivision. It was part of the development agreement along with the two green parcels to the south, which are sort of pedestrian accessways. All of those were included when the Callahan Estates subdivision was originally approved in two thousand and five. All of those were included when the Callahan Estates subdivision was originally approved in 2005. Mini parks, and again, this is Eric's, but I think I've learned this from being around this business for a while, can be somewhat post-ineffective because of the scale. They're relatively small, but they do require maintenance. And you don't get a lot of use out of them in a lot of ways because they're limited in their size. And I think if you all have been out to Winters Ranch, there is a similar mini park that's in part of Winters Ranch. Not saying don't do them, but a lot of times, you know, they can be relatively high maintenance. As you can see, there's a huge linear park that's part of Stone Throw, right to the north. And that's sort of the justification for why we started looking at, maybe we don't build this mini park. We use some funds that we did to, from the sale of the lot to the developer to allow them to build a house and apply those to a park improvement somewhere else in town. So that's sort of the genesis of what happened. Because the DA refers to 109 lots, this becomes 110. You have to amend it. Because the tentative map refers to this as a public parcel that would be indebted to the city, it's now a private parcel, you have to amend the map itself. So that's really why. It's a relatively small change, but it affects both documents. And the planning commission considered this at their last meeting. They recommended that you go ahead and amend the tentative map. And of course, the approval of the DA is a council decision because it's an agreement between a private property owner and the city. That's pretty much it. There is some language that you see in your staff report. We're still kind of massaging some of the wording in section two, which is the critical section. That's the one that talks about the new language in the First Amendment to the amended restated development agreement that we're under right now. We hope to have that resolved in the next day or so. In essence, what will be added to that, which you don't have in the copy, is a reference to the $90,000 payment that will be made to the city. At the time, a certificate of occupancy is issued for the house that would be built on a former parcel E, now lot 101. And that will be added to that section of the amendment as well. So a little bit of language addition and some numbers that need to be tweaked a little because of the fact that the amount of acreage being dedicated has gone down. As a result, some of the numbers have to change to address that. And that's it. As I said, Eric's here, he can talk to you more about the maintenance issues. And he has also is involved with negotiating with Mr. Tackar, who's one of the representatives from Crown Communities and the city manager knows about it as well.
Okay, thank you, Dave. Does anybody got any questions before we do the public hearing?
I'm going to wait.
Anybody? Okay, we'll have a public hearing at 7:42. Is there anybody that would like to speak to this item? Go on, let's. Okay, we'll close the public hearing at 7:42, 10. Okay. If there's no
I have a question.
Yeah, go ahead.
So just, at first, when I heard we were going to reduce the amount of park there, I was a little hesitant. But once I hear the reasoning behind it, you know, I understand the maintenance issues with that small of a park and the proximity to the linear park. So I think I can see doing that. So that property, then, they're going to turn around and use it as another lot to build a home? And they're going to pay us for that fee for that? Do we have that fee?
Yeah, that's the $90,000.
We're going to get $90,000 for the sale of that lot?
And it's a negotiated thing because the lot wasn't going to have improvements on it. I mean, it was going to have irrigation, but it wasn't going to have sewer and all those things. So this developer now has to go back and add those. And so we worked out what was the cost that it was going to take for him to make it a developed lot versus, you know, the benefits of the city. And the $90,000 was the amount that was agreed on.
Okay. Because I remember at the planning commission meeting, I don't think that number had been decided.
I didn't know it at the time. You probably have been, but I didn't know it.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, any other questions, concerns?
Yeah, would the $90,000 be used just on any of Winters Parks or for that specific?
I guess we can use it wherever. We were thinking about maybe moving it up into the linear park just to, you know, to benefit, you know, the associate subdivision.
Benefit that area.
Yeah, that's good.
I just don't know what $90,000 gets you in a park. What might that get? A lot?
Not a lot.
Not a lot? For instance?
It could give you a lot, it could give you a little, depends on what you're doing. So what we've decided is basically just designing that linear park. And then, once we get an idea of what we want and what we want for Homes By Town to build, then we have some extra money there to put towards amenities and kind of upscale it. Not necessarily saying that this is for this, but it may be, you know, to get a better shade structure, you know, whatever you want to add in. It hasn't been decided. I know that Homes By Town has sent an email out to John to try to get back to, they have another kind of drawing they want to show us. So there's no definite answer to like I said, $90,000, I buy a bunch of grass. But it'd be a bunch of grass that we didn't have before, so.
Fair enough.
Well, I'd definitely like to see it stay within that same neighborhood and go towards Linear Park. You know, since that's where it's coming out. Rather than going someplace else in town. That's just my opinion.
So we've met with the Homes By Town folks. There's been, a number of years ago, we did a design for the linear park. Since then, we've done some modifications to it. We had them come back in and basically, you know, the thing that's nice is that we just did Walnut Park. And Walnut Park is wildly successful. That park going into that neighborhood over there is a huge hit. So we kind of, we've shared some of our experience with Walnut Park and some of the things that we can put in that we think are successful. But, you know, that $90,000, as it comes in, whether it goes into the linear park, even kicking around the idea of if there was a chance for us to get in and maybe do some grading on the sports park with it to try and create some level of momentum. But, yeah, we just, we've looked at the proximity, we look at the $90,000. If we want to bring some money into the linear park or the sports park, we have some autonomy with the money.
Yeah, I would agree with that. If this is approved, that we consider using that money either in the linear park or the sports park in that area of town out there, yeah.
I agree with Bill.
Okay. Nobody got anything else, but we'll take a motion.
I'll make a motion. Let's see if I can find this here. I've moved that we approve the proposed first amendment to the amended and restated development agreement and amended tentative subdivision map for Callahan Estates subdivision with the added part of using those funds in that area of town in that either linear park or the sports park.
I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously with the addition of specifying where the funds go. Okay, moving on. Item number six, public improvement agreement and subdivision final map approval for Callahan Estates Phase One.
Alan, back again.
Hi, Alan Mitchell, Poncho Enterprises. I'd like to recognize Nancy, we've worked with her. We've already done that. So this is a lot of redundancy. This is Callahan Estates, I'm Alan Mitchell, love it, the same stuff tonight. But basically, we're going through the same process that we did for Winters, for Stone Throw earlier. But this needed to take that administrative tentative map change before we could accept the final map. So the final map that we're talking about now with this item reflects the changes that you just approved, okay? So what's unusual about this and Stone Throw is we're actually looking at irrevocable offers of dedication. Typically, I come to you with a final map and I say, we want to adopt the final map and then we want to adopt the resolution for the grant deed for the right-of-way, the public utility easement, send any separate parcels. In this case, the developers chose to wait on their final maps and start building. So they've been under construction for over a year. And so now they're coming to us with their final map. So the city is prudent not, for the city not to accept that right-of-way because they're out there tearing it up, right? So we don't want any liability associated with owning that right-of-way and fee title or any of those parcels or the PUE. So we're going to kick that down the street a little bit with this irrevocable offer of dedication. Basically, it puts them on notice and they accept responsibility. At some point, we're going to come and accept that dedication, but we're not going to do it right now. So that's what that IOD is. And the Subdivision Map Act allows it and a lot of cities use it. We've just never used it here. So it's a unique way of getting us what we want, but kicking it down the road and not owning the right-of-way. So we want to adopt the resolution for the irrevocable offer of dedication. So there's right-of-way, there's the PUE, there's parcels F and G for some open space, and there's parcel X where the West Main Sewer Pump Station will go. Okay? We also want to adopt a resolution authorizing the execution of the public improvement agreement, which is a typical agreement. Once we accept the final map, we want to put them under that agreement. That's, they say, we're going to bond for these improvements, we're going to provide insurance, we're going to guarantee that we get these public improvements done within a certain timeframe. I think it's a year. So Cal has signed that agreement and we just want the mayor to execute it. And then we also want to approve the subdivision map, 4508, for Callahan Estates Phase One and authorize Nancy to record the public improvement agreement and final map with the county recorder as her final act with the city winners.
Any questions?
Tracy's going to do it.
Anybody have any questions or concerns? I don't believe we have to have a public hearing, but is there anybody that would like to speak to this item? Just come on up, tell us who you are.
My name's Cal Tackar, I'm with Crown Community. I just want to come up and thank everyone with the city. This is a long process as far as the park parcel and amending the map. Took a lot of coordination. And, you know, I'll name a few people, Eric, Shelley, Alan Mitchell, Dave Daweswell, even Gene Ashjohn, everybody. Everybody's been a pleasure to deal with. And then under the leadership of John Dunleavy, he's very, everything is going very well. In fact, I've dealt with a lot of municipalities in my time. I mean, I've been doing this nearly 30 years. And I'll tell you, this is the first city council hearing I've gone to where I got cake.
Hey, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Timing is everything.
Yeah, timing is everything. It doesn't happen every time.
All right. If nobody's got anything else? Consent to an irrevocable offer of dedication of right-of-way, public utility easement in parcels F and G for open space and parcel X for sewer pump station for the Callahan Estates Phase One Final Map Number 4508. And adopt resolution 201826 approving the authorizing, authorizing the mayor to execute the public improvement agreement with Crown Communities Winters, C-A-L-L-C, and approve the subdivision final map number 4508 for Callahan Estates Phase One and authorize city clerk to record the public improvement agreement and final map with the county recorder.
I'll second that.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. All right, moving on. Draft?
Just real quick before we move on. There are a tremendous number of moving parts on both this and the Stone Throw/Winters Highland Project. It's, there's an amazing number of moving parts on it. And I can't say enough for our team on this thing. The conditions had a full development agreement, had various environmental review aspects to it. Each one of the agreements have well over 200 conditions on them. And they aren't easy conditions. And I give credit to, Alan right now is digging through, understand that we also have the public improvement agreement that has just gone in. There's the subdivision agreement that has to go on all these things. And it's not light reading. And there are many, many, many details on the thing. And Gene's not here, so I'll say something nice about him. But even Gene and everybody, seriously, are out there all the time. From Ponachello, we have Kevin, who is our public works inspector out there on the projects. And, you know, they're out there. There's so much going on, it's amazing. And I'm very proud of the staff. They're doing it well.
All right, thank you. All right, draft wastewater treatment facility master plan and recommended options.
Yes, we, I'm here with our representative from Larry Walker, Gorman, and we're going to talk about the draft master plan, which we brought to you a few years back. They started this process in 2006. It was kind of obvious that we needed to sort of start planning for expansion. That's when all the, all these developments were planning that'd be going then. Of course, the housing market kind of tanked and so everything kind of got put on the back burner. So more recently, with things kind of gearing up again, we've decided we need to start reevaluating the wastewater treatment master plan and come up with a recommended option in terms of how to deal with population growth. We brought this to you last April, or 2016, actually. That was to the council. But we were using much lower population numbers of 8,800. So we went back to the drawing board and came back with the population growth of 12,243 by year 2036. And asked Gorman to kind of update those numbers. We also are including any new regulatory requirements, which may be coming down the pike. We've kind of been under the radar on a lot of that stuff. So there's five options. We do have a recommended option of 2A as our best alternative. And I'll leave it to Gorman to go over the PowerPoint with you and ask you to look at the options and make a recommendation. We did bring this to the planning commission and they supported our suggested recommended option of 2A. So we need the council to give you a chance to make comments and give us your thoughts.
Okay, one quick question before you go. I don't know if it's you or who. The new projection you have with the 12,000 and change by 2036, can you tell us how you came up with that?
Well, that was kind of a, we've cut, there's several other master plans going on, flood master plan. So we all wanted to kind of get them all in sync. And so that's looking at total build-out and I'm not sure. Because that, it's pretty far out there in terms of projecting. I think it's looking at all the, what could be built that's not necessarily, you know, under any kind of agreement or anything right now. So it's kind of projecting all the way out to the
Yeah, the, okay, so the density that the general plan gets to is 12,500. Given on basic cohorts and those types of things.
And is that including or excluding our sphere of influence, those two?
It includes everything that's in the sphere.
Okay.
Based on projected densities on things.
So unless we start massaging densities, that should be a fairly accurate number.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you for that clarification.
Hi, good evening, Mr. Mayor and city council members. Mr. Donleavy? Good to see you.
On the side?
On the side, yeah. My name is Gorman Lau, I'm with Larry Walker Associates. And I've been helping Carol and Mr. Donleavy, John here, work on this master plan for the last couple of years. Just kind of going over kind of the purpose and goals of this master plan. We wanted to really address the city's needs for wastewater treatment facilities through 2036. Back in, back in 1996, there was a wastewater Back in, back in 1996, there was a wastewater after the housing recession occurred and population and housing wasn't, wasn't moving forwards projected. And as Carol mentioned, this wastewater facilities master plan really works in conjunction with a couple of other master plans and general plan and things like that, so that we're all kind of on the same page in terms of population projection and the needs of the city out to 2036. One of the goals of this treatment facility master plan really is to promote water recycling. As you know, we went through a drought recently and we're still trying to recover from that process. And what we want to do is to provide wasted, treated wastewater as a resource to the surrounding community if it's possible. So just real quick, this is just a map of the current wastewater treatment facility. It's a pond operated system. Wastewater that's treated through the ponds are disposed of in the North Sprayfield up on the upper right of the, of the map there, the big box there, and then also on the South Sprayfield, in the bottom left corner there. Just in terms of designing this master plan, we wanted to just highlight some of the key differences between the 1996 master plan and this 2017 master plan. The projection back in 1996 was that you guys would reach 12,500 people in 2010, but you know that
Missed that one.
Didn't quite happen. But we're projecting basically out to about the same amount in about 20 years from now. The other key, the key, other key design in this wastewater master treatment, master plan was really to figure out how much wastewater was being generated by people currently versus back in 1996. And as you know, with water conservation and newer, newer facilities, newer homes with low flow systems and things like that, we really decreased the wastewater that's generated per person on a daily basis. So the current treatment facility can basically go stretch a little bit further with more people. And ultimately, the, the 1996 master plan just looked at disposal of wastewater, treated wastewater in the spray fields, the North and South Sprayfields, as I showed you in the previous map. But under this 2016, 2017 master plan, we're looking at potentially using the spray fields or providing recycled water to some of the farmers in the surrounding areas. As Carol mentioned, we looked at five different alternatives through this process. The treatment facility is currently a secondary wastewater treatment facility. The differences between alternatives really pertain to the way that the ponds are operated, Pond One, whether we keep it full or empty at the onset of the wet season, and then whether or not we line or leave, we line or leave the ponds unlined. The key options in, in kind of the water balance process was that we were trying to move towards full water recycling and also we have to design for the 100-year annual rainfall. Did a bunch of water balances for each of those alternatives. This is just a demonstration of one of them. We looked at it monthly against this for the water year. And ultimately, what we came up with was what we expect at 12,200 people, the amount of wastewater generated, how we would need to develop facilities to manage the additional wastewater that would come from an increase of about 5,000 people from the current population. Currently, there's about 288 acres, acre feet of storage capacity in the ponds in each of these alternatives here. And just, just so that you guys focus on the recommended alternative, it's 2A. Under, under that situation, we would break out this, this 20-year master plan into two phases. Phase one would be kind of this next 10-year period, and then the phase two would be kind of the following 10-year period. We would ultimately need about 480 acre feet of storage capacity to meet the requirements under alternative 2A. I'm going to just skip a couple of these because we basically just outlined what the, what the facilities would need to be implemented.
The yellow boxes are new ponds?
Would be new ponds, yes.
By 2036 with the additional acre feet capacity.
Exactly, yeah. So each of these maps, I kind of left them in here just, just for reference, but alternative 2A really just focuses on building this new pond vibe out in the South Sprayfield. And that would provide the capacity to basically store all the water that is generated by the city as well as any rainfall that falls on the ponds and provide that in the summer to recycled water uses. One more of those. In terms of cost considerations, we looked at capital as well as operations and maintenance costs. The capital costs, of course, would include the construction of new storage ponds, lining the storage ponds, so you basically increase the, increase the capture and maintain the water in the ponds. We would need to put together a new transfer and recycled pump station to provide that water to the surrounding recycled water users as the city brings those folks online. And then also in terms of kind of planning out 20 years, we also need to consider equipment replacement for pumps and other mechanical facilities that just wear out over time. In terms of operations and maintenance costs, these are kind of the ongoing annual costs would be labor, chemical usage, and energy for operating the system. And again, just really focusing on alternative 2A, this, this alternative would generate about 810 acre feet of recycled water per year. The capital costs, present worth capital costs come out to about 4.4 million. The annual costs, the annual operations costs come out to about, sorry, the present worth of the annual operation costs come out to about 6.4 million. So over 20 years, the cost of this alternative would be about $10.7 million. One key note here is that this currently doesn't include any of the recycled water distribution pipelines because the city hasn't decided on who's going to potentially sign up for recycled water use. So there is that potential additional cost in the future.
So is that number on 2A lower because we're recycling the water and selling it and that helps bring the cost down? Is that why that number is lower?
We actually didn't consider the cost of potentially selling the water in this analysis. So that would be potentially an added bonus. The reason why alternative 2A is significantly lower is because, here, I can back up a little bit, but
One pond.
It's only one pond, and some of the other maintenance and replacement, equipment replacement needs would be kind of addressed with this alternative. Whereas, for example, alternative 2B, you require two ponds, and some of these other alternatives require multiple ponds. So there is an additional construction cost related to those, those other alternatives. So answer your question?
Yeah.
So we basically, in evaluating each of the five alternatives, we looked at different factors and just kind of weighted them based on the importance with consultation from the city staff on how we would, how we would compare each of these alternatives. A couple of things that we looked at, of course, the cost of the project, which is way kind of the heaviest out of all of the factors. The amount of water recycling that we would provide, what would happen with the spray fields. One of the potential outcomes is that if, if the city is able to ultimately recycle all the water, the spray fields, to some extent, could be leased out to growers nearby or even sold off as, as a potential, as a potential resource. There's the ease in operate, ease in reliability of the operation of the treatment plants depending on the different alternatives, regulatory considerations, and other environmental considerations. So once we kind of went through this evaluation, the recommended alternative was alternative 2A with alternative 2B as kind of the secondary alternative. And that is all I have. Open to questions, Carol? You guys have questions? I don't know. Do you want to mention about the recycled water users and what are your kind of ideas?
My finer hopes on the recycled water. We only have one farmer that's currently taking it, but he's had problems taking the water, various issues. And the first year, he took a lot of water, but subsequent to that, he hasn't hardly taken any. Part of it is, he can't take all of our wastewater and only use that because it starts to become a problem with his trees, and so he has to use his well water alternatively. So it's like a week with well water and a week with recycled water. But, and then he had, he had issues with, he was trying to get permanent power out there because he had been using a generator. More recently, he still hasn't taken any water the last two years. And this year, he was actually looking at adding some more filtering because he wants to have a better quality water. And so that's going to be increased costs. I have a call into him to find out where we're at with whether or not he's actually going to take any water. And to get recycled water users other than him, it's a little bit of a process to go back to the state unless they're already listed. Because you can't, almonds would be okay, and pistachios would be okay, olives would not. So there's not as many farmers surrounding us right now that would be willing to take the water. So, so I was very optimistic that we could get rid of all the water, but I'm not so positive if that's going to be. Unless we went to tertiary treatment, which is a whole, that's option.
Three.
Yay. Because if you have tertiary treatment, you can put it in pretty much anywhere. You have a lot more options. You can go on your golf fields. But this only secondary treatment, you're really limited on what you can do with your water. You have to go back to the state and get the, fly off on it for the drinking water side and the natural water quality side. But things, especially for outcomes, unfortunately, you know, that would be more incentive for people to start looking at options. We weren't really getting a lot of income on the water because we couldn't really charge them more than we pay for getting it out of the well. So, and I think, so I mean, it's, it's a nominal amount of money that we were getting, and we only got it that first year. So it's, it hasn't really come to fruition as much as we were hoping. So I'm going through discussions with them to see if we can make that happen more consistently.
Okay, any questions?
So have we reached out to maybe any, anybody at UC Davis or any of our other surrounding kind of agricultural partners to see if there's some other use that we, besides the one use that we have now for that recycled water?
Well, it's getting it to wherever it needs to go. This orchard was right next door, so it was really simple. Piped over there, it's really hardly cost at all. So we'd have to truck it somewhere or lay a whole lot of pipe to get it. Mitch Maravich was looking at maybe using it to water some of the plantings he wants to do along Dry Creek, but anywhere near the creek is a whole another blah blah.
How close is the sports park to the? Yeah, about a quarter mile or so.
It could be definitely feasible on our parks, but we have to
You have to go to much higher level treatment.
Yeah.
Yeah. How hard would it be for us to look at what it would cost for us to get that water over and use it on the park versus the value of the water we'd be pouring on the park once the park was done?
Yeah, there's no doubt. I mean, if we could use this to water sports fields, Carol's right, I think the regulatory requirements would have us going to some level of tertiary treatment for it. It's very costly.
It's so much that it's allowed.
Yeah, it's very expensive.
Go ahead. In, in the options, if you came up with another way of getting rid of the water, does that completely upset your options? I mean, there, there is the possibility, I understand, that the water could be used in another way. And that probably, I just heard about it in the break, and that would be part of the public hearing, I guess. But maybe we should listen, have, see what the public hearing brings up.
Sure. Ready?
Okay, anybody like to speak to this item?
My name is Susan Hamilton. I'm a farmer just beyond the sewer ponds. We have just under 400 acres. We've done a lot of environmental restoration. And years ago, when we were dealing with PG&E, remember, I suggested that we create a Petaluma or Arcata-style wastewater treatment facility there, which includes wetlands, hiking trails. That was shot down as being too expensive, which I tried to get, we're smaller. Arcata's about 17,000. We're not even at 12,000. We won't be for a long time. But we could do a modified plan, which would create wetlands and ponds there. The water can be put on that. Some of the advantages are it offsets loss, habitat loss due to development. Wildlife is add water and stir. Last night, I was out at a three-year-old pond in woodland that had thousands of white-faced ibis. I saw 10 species in a matter of 10 minutes, many of which are not typical around here. I, yellow-headed blackbirds, long-tailed brackles. It was phenomenal. And those birds in three years found that site. So it would help recharge groundwater. It would create tourism. Birds spend an estimated $41 billion annually. They're an affluent, educated population. We're looking for other sources of, other things for tourists to do. I'm a farmer. I don't have time to leave people around my farm. I know that's the hip thing. I don't, I don't, you know, it's, it's not realistic for a real farmer to do tourism. But this would create a lot of tourism. They travel a lot. They're, they're good people to have. It would create learning opportunities for our students. I don't see how our current generation is going to become stewards of our planet without getting to know our planet a little bit. It's, so we'd have ponds, wetlands, hiking trails. The bathroom facilities could be dealt with with the sports park, so that's not a lot of cost. Anyway, I, I, I think we can no longer afford to treat land, any land, like a waste product. And these cement ponds are simply a waste product. They're too deep to, for birds to use them. So unlike, I was out at Petaluma the other day where there were nesting, there were swans, there were nesting birds, there were people hiking, they were enjoying it. It takes something which is a negative and makes it possible. So I think it'd be a win-win for, for winters. And I've talked to people in the state. My friend is a senior water engineer. She said we could find state money. I, I think there would be a lot of people that get on board and we could get outside funds to help.
And where exactly are you thinking that?
The North Field and possibly the South Field. So, and, so instead of, you know, drying it up and selling it off, let's make something that's positive for the city. And in terms of selling that water to farmers, I would never use that water at the level of treatment that it is now because the last thing I need is to find out 10 years from now, I have a contamination problem on my soil. This, this helps clean the water in a very environmentally friendly way. Cattails are an amazing way to take out heavy metals out of the water. So they, the woman from Steady Addies, that's what her family does, is this kind of project. So there are a lot of resources if we want to own this stretch. Any questions?
I, I have a question. I mean, I understand, so we would still have the ponds and then the water would come directly out of the ponds and flood the fields?
Yeah, yeah. Well, not, yeah, you would have to do some, some grading like we've done on our, our land. You, you do grading and, and do plantings.
Okay.
So, and I'm not the scientist behind it. So there, these are questions that, the science, actually, I can't answer. I just, I know how good ponds are though.
But, but we would actually empty the ponds then to flood the?
Not necessarily empty them.
Okay.
You know, they're, they're, the facilities, I would love it if some of you guys would come with me to Petaluma and we can take a tour of their facility. And, and you could get to see, it's, it's so close and you guys could get to see what is possible.
Sounds interesting.
Sounds interesting.
I have a soil scientist on board. I have state people on board. And, and Ottawa, I'm potentially interested.
I wanted to speak to this from, you know, from the point of view of some of the experiences that we recently had. We went to a, a We went to a kind of conference for a day at Secog. And what we were presented with was that cities aren't really able to just have a retail base where a store sells an item. It's more experience-oriented now, where you have like a coffee shop that people go to because they hang out and see their friends. Or you have a yoga studio where people come in and out all day, or bike place that doesn't just sell bikes, but it teaches people how to bike. Experience-oriented places draw people. And I think that if we can look at using a land use that's also experience-based, it could be a way that we grow kind of a tax base in town while also being stewards of the environment.
Arcata estimates they have 100,000 visitors a year to their facility. 100,000 visitors go visit their sewer. So there, and as I was talking to my birdie friend that turned me on to the woodland site last night, she said, we don't mind paying. We're happy to pay a new speed. They want to keep that resource there. So I think it would be a really nice adjunct to the end of our tourism that we have now. And plus, we could be leaders in this area. There's nothing, there's nothing like it. It don't count.
Field trip?
Field trip. And I talked to one of the plant managers and he'd said he'd be happy to talk to us. So I, like I say, it's, I'm not asking for something as big as Petaluma or as big as Arcata, but I think we can do a modified thing that would really help us.
I have one question.
Go ahead.
In any of these examples you've seen, are they next to an orchard? Because one of these ponds is next to one.
Yeah, no, I understand because I live out on that road. There would be the pond between Danny's trees and the, you know, the facility.
I think what Harold's asking is, in these other places you've been, is there a similar situation where there's orchards nearby? Isn't that what you're asking?
Yeah, so what is, what is, what is the concern here?
Well, you just stated that you didn't want anything going on your property in 100 years. And you're next to it. That would be the same idea.
Oh, well, okay, so.
Put your farmer hat on.
Okay, so, but these ponds treat the water. That's one thing. The soil is amazing. The soil, the plants treat the water. So it's not dumping it on Danny's trees. And it's not going to affect Danny's trees. Also, Danny's trees are upslope from this. This would be groundwater recharge. So this is water flowing down here basically. So, yeah, it's not, it's runoff. The only reason that we don't have Heinz Nursery next to our ranch is because my dad said he was going to monitor the runoff that ran off onto ours. They went away because that is illegal. So I understand the importance of not polluting people's things. But you're still talking about putting in more ponds. I mean, it's not as if you're not going to put those ponds there. So instead of just putting cement-lined ponds that are not any kind of viable habitat for anything, why don't we create viable habitat?
You have some votes out there now.
Yeah, they land, but there's.
Well, there's actually a case that's coming.
They, yeah, but it's nothing like what we could, we could say.
I have a question. So it sounds like what you're proposing would be something like, instead of using the spray fields for spraying the water on evaporating, we would have ponds there for wildlife?
Yeah, for wildlife and for cleaning the water for filtration.
So the water that's going into there is already treated and?
Yeah, it's semi-treated. It's not, you know, you're not dumping it off.
Yeah, I just want to make sure we're not getting any kind of situation where we'd be contaminating groundwater and that type of thing.
No, that's, I mean, there's a lot of science behind this that we could utilize. So it's, it's, it's a great way to clean water.
Shouldn't you have to go back and do all the FBR, okay, and all that stuff? We're already doing monitoring now, so now it continues.
Yeah.
Yeah. If anybody that wants to.
I definitely think it's worth considering.
Just ask my number and I'd love to go on and deal with it.
Yeah, the bus. I'll share with you that I've talked with Ms. Hamilton about it. She shared a ton of information. I've been to the Petaluma facility to go check it out. Didn't make the roadie up to Arcata, but basically what she's describing is an amazing amenity. It really is, it's very cool, to say the least, and the potential for it. But it really is just that, you know, it would be a use to kind of move it over to someplace else than the spray fields. The plan that we're considering tonight is for how we process and have all that. But there's no question, it, for all intents and purposes, it's like building a park of some type, is that the wetlands are very beautiful. Now, in Arcata, they actually use it as part of the treatment process because it's kind of like an estuary setup. And I think that eventually Arcata probably just charges out into the ocean with some of their excess water on stuff. But there's no question, they're very beautiful. And they have a huge potential for what she's describing.
Yeah, yeah. And beyond beautiful, they're actually effective later. So the water, the water that Danny's buying now could be put there. It's not like it has to be, you don't need to invest millions of dollars to upgrade the sharing.
Well, with what Carol's saying and we've learned over the last few years that selling that water to local farmers and stuff isn't penciling it out. So it's not, it's not working out. We'd all like to see things be as useful as possible. I kind of think this is an alternative that's definitely worth exploring. I'd like us to look into it a little further and see what we can do.
Yeah, the best way I would describe is to put this in some form of a park plan of things. Because, you know, obviously, we've got the water. Over the years, by the way, when Ms. Hamilton, my father, was alive, they've done some amazing environmental things out on their property. Our partners with Audubon, who eventually came in about the property right behind the Hamiltons. We've talked with a lot of our environmental partners about this, this very concept. Because unquestionably, the potential for habitat is there. As we've looked at some of the flood control solutions, doing precisely what she's describing is something that we've put into the mix because she's right. You create a habitat, you include some of the right plants. In flood control, it aids with sedimentation and, you know, very clean water eventually going into any of the creek tributaries, whether it even goes into the creek. But this falls right into there. And in a number of years, I've had so many discussions along this line. They're very intriguing, but kind of figuring out how to actually do it is the big question.
It sounds like there's some resources available.
Yeah.
So, John, are you saying that what we do tonight, we, doesn't matter? I mean, we do, we select an. That or any other one. We could still do this?
Absolutely.
Or do we do this in place of, or in addition, something in addition to?
Tonight, we're looking at an infrastructure master plan for the wastewater treatment facility. Because at the end of the day, this is a waste processing facility. So tonight, you know, focusing on that, but the amenity that she's describing, I honestly, as we would look at alternatives for environmental solutions on some things, like I said, this is something that we would drop into what I can only describe as like a park plan of some type.
It's a better use for what comes out of the wastewater.
Absolutely. You know, it's, it's worth a road trip to go over and see. Because when we were going through the PG&E whole issue, they, trust me, they gave me lots of information. So I happened to be over that way and I went and visited it and they were right. It was worth going to. But it's, it's amenity. It's like going to a lake.
So do we have to say that this is something that we would look at 10 years from now? Or is it something that we look at next week or?
Well, I think it would be something that we would look at as we would look at like park plans and those types of things. This would supply the water. There's no doubt about that. You know, at the end of this item, we've got a recommendation on the master plan that's going to go through. It's going to take the capacity of the wastewater that we go there. And inevitably, the water, which is a very important resource for all this stuff, would be the, you know, would basically be the supplier for this lake that we're basically describing, or a big giant wetlands.
I have a question. Is there one plan more than any other plan that would help this creation?
No, I don't think so. Frankly, no. You know, the tertiary plan is the $40 million plan that we could never afford. But ultimately, what she's describing is a wildlife area. It's not like we'd have it people swimming or boating or fishing or doing anything like that. But it is worth it. No, I've got all the things tagged. I'll send some information out. Matter of fact, in one of my Friday updates, I'll include it because she's right that some of the links, it's very cool. I would go to the one up in Arcata if I could get up there.
I'd love to see it too. We need to help somebody.
It's a big, beautiful estuary. Nice stuff.
I'm going to Arcata in July.
Go see it, Jesse.
Take pictures.
All right. Thank you, Susan.
Okay.
Thank you. Appreciate you coming.
Appreciate it.
Is there anybody else that would like to speak to this item? No other discussion with?
Close public hearing? That was public hearing.
Close the public comment.
That was pretty much it. Yeah, it was just public comment.
Somebody just asked me to make a doctor, or I guess, yeah, make a recommendation to.
I have a question for you, Carol, while you're there. In the staff report, you mentioned that new regulatory requirements were also considered with this update. What kind of new?
Well, I mean, there's always the looming idea that they may require us to line more ponds, existing ponds. And there is always the worst-case scenario of saying you have to go to tertiary. I mean, those, they looked at, so we have all those numbers in there. But we're assuming that those are not going to be mandated anytime soon, so.
If I remember right, there is a potential of them coming back and saying we need to align all the ponds, not just new ones, which is proposed into a.
We did a background report many, many years ago that they were supposed to look at and make recommendations. And we've never heard anything from that's what, 100 years old. So it's been a while, so.
Well, the plan that is being recommended tonight is within the current regulatory framework of, within the terms of our current permitting, within the terms of the current regulations. And if the regional board, let's take the landfill, the old landfill is an example. They came up with a new regulation on that.
Yeah.
And all of a sudden, Carol and I and our consultant are at the regional board shaking. But, you know, if they switch the regulatory framework for things, I'm just saying that it would change the entire way the city of Winters would look at itself. Because the option 3A, $40 million, that would be a pipe dream. Because it would, it would just be a different story if we got to it. No, it would just change the course of Winters. It just would.
We do have the upgrades in the 2000 plan. Should be helping us along the way from moving out, coming in, paying.
Mayor, John, what would be the harm, including just a sentence or a paragraph, saying one of our long-term goals is to develop what you heard discussed tonight? To improve the environment, educate, etc., blah, blah, blah.
Absolutely nothing. Tonight, you aren't approving anything. You're giving direction. They'll go back. We will, they're.
Well, there's recommending 2A. I mean, we are going to probably finalize.
Okay, so if the council selects that, there's absolutely no reason why taking from tonight amongst the various alternatives for reuse. You know, at the end of the day, we want to recycle this water. If we can sell it to a farmer, great. If we could build an estuary and fill it, great. It's all the same thing.
So if we go along with the recommendation for 2A tonight, then that'll get expanded upon in the final plan. And we can include some of these other things in that plan when that comes back at a later date for our final approval.
Absolutely.
So I have another comment. So the cost of these is $10,700,000. These are things that are, we will then consider into the fee schedule that will be paid by developers, right? Whichever one we choose, so. I mean, it's in our best interest to choose one with the lowest amount so that we don't have our fees so high that developers won't even come near us if we're going to grow.
But also, remember, in a fee program, there's the existing city and there's the, there's the developers.
Expanded.
So as you go, you know, if we were to stick it at some of the current population levels, we would have to pick half, half of the money we would have to generate from our existing base and then the other half from developers. That would make the next item on tonight's agenda a more exciting conversation if we really wanted to.
So do we need an option? I think I will. How about I move to select item 2A and also adding that we would like to explore an alternative amenity for nature treatment area in the future?
Second.
Okay. All those in favor?
I'm sorry. Here, new second. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, guys. All right. Now we're going to have to find water and sewer rates.
Everybody warmed it up for you. So here you go. You're like the main, it's like a rock concert. Time for the main act.
Good evening. So this evening, before you talking about water and sewer rates, and what I'm asking you to do is review the proposed water and sewer rates to provide direction to staff on issuing a Prop 218 notice and clarify direction to staff regarding a public hearing on August 21st for increasing water and sewer rates. So I gave you guys some handouts in bigger, bolder letters because I was told that I had way too many that were on my page. that I had way too many that were on my page. So we kind of... ...meet the obligations that we have. And our obligations for water and sewer is we need to cover the cost of operating. We need to cover our debt service. And for our debt service obligations, we have to have 20% more than our debt service. So our revenues need to be 120% of all of our expenditures and our debt service. Um, the last few years, we've not been meeting those, those, um, debt service requirements. Sometimes we barely meet it, um, but we're not meeting that. And in the next two years budget, this year's, uh, year-end, we're not looking like we're gonna meet it. And in the next two years, it's not looking like we're gonna meet it. And there's an issue because this affects our credit rating when we go out to do bond financing if we can't meet the current obligations that we've looked before, that we've already placed on ourselves. So what I did was I went through and I did the calculations on what our revenues were, what our, um, what our expenditures are, our debt service, what the 20% is. And I, I just used those numbers and I worked to come up with just the right amount of revenue. And so we have three options that we've listed before you. The first option, option one, is the highest option, and that's if we do absolutely nothing with our existing bonds. We just leave everything alone and we continue paying our debt service based on what it is right now. Um, the sewer would need to go up $10.65 a month. And that would be the increase in 2018 and it would remain steady in 1920 because the expenditures that are budgeted for the second year of the budget, year budget document are so close, they're like $3,000 off, that there's no need to make any changes in the second year. Um, the water would need to go up by $4.61 in the first year a month and then go up by $1.96 in the second year of the budget because there are increased costs. We're talking about increasing the fixed rate. Our water component is made up of a fixed rate and made up of a usage rate. And the problem is that we are getting about 60% of our revenue from the usage rate. And so when we have fluctuation in usage, when everybody conserves, then we, that, that 60% becomes even less. So we're proposing putting it into the fixed rate so that it takes some of the volatility out of what happens if we're asked to conserve. Um, the second option is refinancing our bonds with a lower interest rate but leaving the term alone. So it would be, right now we still owe 20 years on the current bonds. We still owe 20 years on the bonds after we refinance them. They just get a lower interest rate. Um, the sewer would need to go, would go to 940. Um, and the first year in the water, it would be 354, and the second year it'd be $1.99. And then the third option is to refinance the bonds with a lower interest rate but extend the term for 10 years. So we're paying for 30 years. And the sewer would need to go up by $7.04. The residential or the water would need to go up by $1.37 a month. And in the second year, it would need to go up by $1.99 a month. Um, I also gave you some charts just so you can kind of get an idea. The first one is a line chart and it shows the blue is revenue, the, the red is expenditure, and the green shows you what our water usage has been since 2013, 12, 13. We have not changed our rates with the exception of flattening out the tiers. We used to have a three-tier system and we flattened those down. But we have not changed our rates since 2013, 14. And if you look, we had a dramatic decrease in 14, 15, and then 15, 16. We perked up a tiny bit last year, but we also added 72 new houses last year. So, um, we didn't perk up that much. And then it's down. We're projecting it's gonna be down again this year. And a lot of that perk up in the last year is from construction because they use the, the water to keep every, all the dust and dirt down. And so right now, we don't have those houses going in. So now we're just getting the residential water rates from those constructions. And most of them now have their lawns and their plantings, um, matured enough. They're not watering as much when they're brand new and getting everything established. So, um, we're showing that we anticipate the usage being even lower this year than last year. In the sewer fund, which is a bar graph because I just played with them, um, the revenues again are in blue and the expenditures are in red. And part of the drivers of the expenditures for both of these is we have PG&E bills that we have to pay and those rates go up. We also have, um, the PERS rates, which we've talked about before, where they're, they're applied. We've got the unfunded liability. Those numbers are going up and there's not a lot we can do about it. We're not hiring additional staff. We're not making huge increases in pay. Um, there's not a lot of, from a personnel point, the, the thing that's costing us more is the PERS. On the operations side, it's repairs and maintenance and it's the, um, power, which are the big drivers in what our, in what our expenditures are. So, um, what, what I gave you in the staff report was I gave you an example, the Prop 218 notice, that, um, we, we would be sending out based on the direction that you give us. And I used the middle of the road. And I used the middle of the road one because I didn't want anybody to think I was advocating for any high or low. So I chose the middle one 'cause it was in the middle. But it would look very much like the one that was in your staff report or in your packet. It just would have the numbers that you choose to let us or, uh, direct us to use. Um, immediately following this item is the, um, discussion on refinancing the bonds. And Craig with the NHA is here to talk to you about that. Um, we're looking, those are some ways we can cut some expenditures because you lower the, the debt service. When you lower that debt service, you also lower how much 20% of that debt service is. And so what we're trying to do is lower the expenditures coming out of the funds, each of the funds. Try to make this a little bit easier on folks, although I know these aren't easy for us to look at. But it has been a good five years since we took any of this. So I'm open for questions?
Quick five years. I can't believe it's been a long. It feels like it was just yesterday. We were right here.
Yeah, I know.
That was what I was gonna say too. I said, has it really been five years already? Because I remember that being brought up when that rate was approved. It said, this is good for five years. It's like, yeah, it's just wild.
Yeah, because I have it stuck on my, I have it stuck on my board and it says 17, 18, and that's the end of it. So it's been five years since we've been through this exercise. A lot of things have changed. Um, well, obviously, you're looking at the amount of water that people are using. When we were asked to conserve, we, this city conserved. They really did. Unfortunately, when they conserved, it hit our revenue source significantly. And so we, we have to do something at this point. We have to get these funds back operating correctly.
Here.
Yeah. Question. If we, for some, if we decided on the 30-year option, is there any, so we extend the, the length of the repaying it, is there any possibility that we're gonna have to have more bonds to pay for something major in addition?
There is the possibility that the, um, and I don't want, I don't, the likely mayor not to throw anything at me. There is the possibility that Chrome Six may come back to haunt us.
You're not allowed to say that, Derek.
I asked you not to throw anything at me. Um, we don't know what they're gonna do. It's, it's still going through the process. So the shorter answer is yes, there could be things out there that we would need to go back out to the pond for. And what you need to think about when we talk about the refinancing options is think about it as, as refinancing your house. So you get a lower interest rate, but you keep the term the same, then you're, you're paying less for your money. But if you, if you refinance the house and you have 30-year loan, you're 10 years into it, now you extend it for another 30 years, you're paying more for that house than you were originally. So that's kind of the way to think about how, how the two are different. It would obviously, obviously lower the payment more if we lowered the interest rates in which is the 30-year bonds. But then you have to look at how much it's costing you. Maybe saving money because we're not stretching those out. We have a lower interest rate. Um, so you're saving money, whereas in the 30-year, you're probably not saving money.
Yeah. Uh, I, I will tell you that option two comes from me. Uh, the, you know, it, it, it looks like it, it costs residents less, but, uh, in the out years, it actually costs you more. Um, the idea of other financings, um, the ability to kind of tier some things in, um, if we were to be hit with some type of regulatory requirement that just, that, that just socked us, um, whether it be on wastewater, uh, or water, have Chrome Six or the TCB 123 stuff was to come up and, and hit us on something. Um, you, the, the shorter term saves money on the outside, but it also, um, allows for a, a very, a, a very firm projection on, on your overall costs and things, so.
And Craig will be able to address some of that with his particular numbers when we get to the next slide.
Sure.
This, John, in option three, I read through these materials and it, true, you're spending more money, but you're getting a, a longer service in a way, aren't you? And you don't know what's gonna come along, no matter what plan you have.
Correct.
Yeah, y- you're right. Everything is speculative. Uh, the, um, you know, as, as we looked at the assets, uh, we're, we're particularly proud of the, the way that we use these monies. We, there, nothing could have happened better than the timing of our financing because we went out, we got excellent rates, and then the economy crashed and everybody needed work. And if, uh, for those on the council, um, that were here, we kept on coming back with more projects. It was the, the, the reverse. The engineers were always wrong. Oh, it's gonna cost 800, but the big came in at 400. So we're coming back with more things. We actually re-lined almost 40% of all the sewer lines in the city off of, off of that. You know, the, the, this was money spent that nobody can see. But we, we rejiggered the, the, the entire, the, the bones of our system were, were strong.
And the reason that the, um, our financial advisor thinks that the 30-year would be an okay thing to do is because we did spend it on infrastructure that's usually got a 40 to 50-year life. So it's not like, you know, typically, you don't want to, let's take a car. You know, you don't wanna, you don't wanna finance a car over a 10-year period because most of those cars don't last 10 years, you know? And at year five, the car's falling apart and you have to replace it. Whereas this is infrastructure in the ground, so we financed it over 30 years and it's gonna last 40 or 50 years. So that's why he's saying it, it, it can make sense to go ahead and extend the term of the note. Um, so it, it's just kind of what council feels is the best choice for us to take. Um, we have, the fact of the matter is we have to do something. And it's not pleasant and it's not fun. But, um, it's gotten to the point where we cannot let this go on any further. We have to, we have to do some adjustments in order to be able to continue to operate the systems. And there's a lot of things that are outside of our control. You know, we, we had to do some planning for Chrome Six. We spent a lot of money for Chrome Six before it got stopped. Um, that was something that we didn't want to do, but we had to do it. And so we've, we've used money to do the things that were required to do by the regulatory agencies. And now the fact of the matter is, we need to look at current year revenues, current year expenditures, and make sure we're meeting that 120%. So basically, what the bond people want is us to have a 20% surplus every year in our operations to show that we've got the capacity and we have the, um, the, the, um, that we could stick to it. You know, this is what we said we'd do. This is what we're gonna do. And we've gotta do what we can do to make sure that we keep our order and we stand fast and we do what we said we were gonna do in those bond documents. We haven't been being very successful.
So what happens if we don't keep that 20%?
Well, no.
It affects our bond.
It, it affects our bond rating. And then when we have to go out, uh, in, in the future, uh, we'll, we'll get slaughtered when you, you go out. Because if, if all of a sudden, uh, your, your reputation within the bond market is that you aren't gonna keep the, that coverage that they're asking for, um, we're gets around and...
It's a big drop in your credit.
They want the coverage.
You have to show, you have the discipline, which is the word I was looking for.
Yeah, the, 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 the best example of why we carry coverage is, um, best seen in, uh, redevelopment or our property tax. When we sold our redevelopment bonds, we, we, we took the most conservative option of having what they called a 35% coverage. So we, uh, the tax increment in the city was 35% over where we felt our bond repayment would be. So where did that come up? Um, in 2008, when, when the assessor went and reduced the property taxes in Winters by 23%, he just went in and, he just nailed 23%. Realized that, I think, that, that this year, we're back to where our property taxes were in 2008. But, so they came and, 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 and hit us on that. But had we not had that 23% or the 35% coverage, uh, we wouldn't have been able to cover.
Heard the discussion when we had the, five years ago on what happens if water use goes down? How are we gonna keep paying for this? And we didn't really address it, obviously, because we're looking at it again. We didn't address it adequately at that point.
Well, we wouldn't have been addressing it. We would have been addressing it in the coming year anyway because we passed the, the financing plan. So we would have been addressing it anyway. What we didn't anticipate was the governor wanting a 30% reduction in water use and everybody jumping on board and doing that. And so, you know, it's, um, it, it's been significant. It's been really a significant hit with all the conservation. And if you drive around town and you look at some of the lawns where they pulled the lawns out and they put in drought tolerant stuff and alternate landscaping, it's, it makes a huge difference in the amount of water that's being used.
Oh, yeah. I also see a lot of still dead lawns and dead yards completely, too. Yeah.
Because they, they've gotten to where they're so used to not watering it because that's their conservation measure, that they're just not going back to it. And there's a lot of people that aren't going back to it. So, and, and that, I mean, technically, last year, we were not in a drought last year.
They were?
The water did not, the water usage did not go up much. I mean, it went up a little bit, but again, you figure you added 72 residences in the city. And it didn't go up much.
Okay. We've talked a lot about houses and residents, but, and I'm almost afraid to mention this because we've been waiting on it for three years and it hasn't happened yet. But, you know, we're looking at a building finally going up across the street and another one anticipated out the highway that are both big-time water users when they're actually done and occupied.
Yeah.
Was that considered in, in, in any of your calculations over this timeframe that you had on here for the next two, three physical years?
Because I have no idea what their water uses are. Um, and I have no, I, you know, I'm hoping they're gonna open in January, but I have no idea. So I had to look at, at, because realize that when they come on, we're gonna be pumping more water, so our costs are gonna go up even more.
Yeah.
So, um, I, I kinda have to wait until they come in and we get a deal for what they're doing. Because again, we pump more water, so electricity's gonna go up. Um, and who knows what regulations or whatever else is gonna happen with all of that. And then we'll have a revenue bump up. Are they gonna match up? Are they not gonna match up? I don't really know right now. That's not something, and we don't have any experience with anything like that. So I'm looking at basically what we have now. So I'm looking at basically what we have now, just taking care of what we have now. I have not put any new houses in for any of the new subdivisions. This is as if we stopped time today and everybody continues to use the way they're using today. This is what we need to do to address the problem.
So there, we're not the first ones to put hotels in, so there must be some average water use for, you know, per room for hotels that we could find, you know? Just to give you an idea of what we'd be looking at.
Well, also the legislature passed and the governor signing new conservation measures that, that are going to go in. And plus, you know, these hotels are probably going to have all the low flow, everything in it. So, you know, it could be a little bit of a bump, but if, if we were just going to consider them as units, if, if we have 146 hotel rooms, if we just, you know, equalize those as, as another 70 houses that went in relatively with no landscaping and none of that stuff, you know, we would probably be looking at the same type of experience we had last year from, from the Winters Ranch going in. You know, bumps up a little bit, but nothing to really write home about. And plus, people are into the conservation. They just are. The, all over you see everybody always ripping everything out. And quite frankly, that was probably the weakness five years ago. We didn't think that everybody was going to reduce the amount of water to the degree that they did. And they did.
They responded.
Yeah.
I have a question.
My wife still waters the same.
Not at my house.
She's not letting nothing die. She said, I did that last time Terry Brown was in office. I'm not doing it again.
I have another question. I have another question, which maybe, maybe this would go to Eric. I'm not sure. Is there any way we could improve our efficiencies on the operating costs, the expenditures we have on that end of it? I mean, we've done a lot to bring it down, but.
All right, yeah.
Anything we could explore?
Sure. Yeah, we can explore. I don't know. I mean, if there was something that we could do that we knew about, we'd be doing it. So, but, I mean, there's always something to look into, whether cities to look at, ask questions if somebody else has done something. So, but yeah, we could definitely look into it. But, you know, on like our side on the parks and stuff, we're, we're trying to walk that line of making things look good and not, not do too much, but do enough. But efficiency, you said if there is, Tony's, he's pretty efficient doing the right thing and, and effective, but, but we'll definitely look into it and see what we can do to try to make it more cost effective.
Thank you.
And I'll, I'll just keep using more water like you so we can cut out.
Thank you.
So tonight, what we're being asked for is which option we want to move forward with because, and that's got to go out with the 218 notices and then get brought back for approval after that process is done. So this is several months down the road before we really get in trouble over this.
So the way, so the way it works is you will direct us on which option you want to take tonight. We will have Prop 218 notices out by July 1st and then we have 45 days. And at the end of the 45 days, which would be about August 15th, it's not a council meeting night, so August 21st, we would have a public hearing and you would select the rate and approve the rate. So 40, you know, a little over 45 days from now. Okay, 60 days from now because it's the 19th. So it'll be about 60 days.
Go ahead, Jesse.
So moving right along, I think that when I look at option one of doing nothing, I think water conservation is here to stay and so the trajectory will be the same. And I think that we, you've proven that we can't grow our way out of this, no matter what, it, it's staying the same. So I would just like to take option one off the table. And looking at option two and three, it might be that I'm on that senior task force, but I just hear the growing older population saying I'm on a fixed income. And, and that's, out of the 7,000 people in our population, at least 1,000 are in that age bracket. So I, as much as I think option two is the fiscally responsible option, I'm, I'm moving towards option three as the one that I think would serve our population best. Those are my thoughts.
I don't like any of them, but you know, we have. But I would agree. I think of the three, I would, I know John doesn't probably agree. You want to try to keep this fiscally responsible, but.
Option two is just, that's just the way that I think.
But I think going to that the longer term, putting it out farther, keeping the rates, any type of rate increase that we will propose as low as we.
Yeah, I, I agree completely because it's, every dollar matters, especially with the senior population that's on the fixed income. And, because we went through this before, those that were around when we went through this before, five whole years ago, are still kicking with that. That was the biggest concern, you know, with the senior population and every dollar matters. Even though I agree with John's thinking about the not extending the term, I, I get that.
Well, that's why the option is here.
It's just like refinancing your house and pushing it out another 10 years. You pay a lot more money, but I, I lean towards that every dollar for those on fixed incomes and low incomes, it, it definitely matters. So that makes me lean towards option three.
As long as people are talking about their options. That's, I, I was more for option two until I heard, I, I knew about the problems of the lower income families. When I asked the question about option three and, and if we have to rebond or bond, and it's possible that we could, as long as we can still do it, I would, I would want to keep the option, the increase as small as possible.
I will chime in for option three as well.
Okay.
We don't have to vote. We have.
Do you have a motion?
I, I just wanted to add that a lot of this is totally out of our control.
Yeah.
And unfortunately, taking the best, the best choice of the three is option three in my mind.
So Ethan, is this something we need to do a, a motion and a vote on, or are we just making a recommendation to staff to pursue option three or?
Probably better do a motion than vote. Just recommend staff to proceed with the steps to bring back option three.
Okay.
Okay. You heard me. Somebody want to make a motion?
I'll do it. Move to, say you're working again. Getting tired.
To direct staff to proceed with the steps necessary to bring back option three for a public hearing.
Move as stated.
Set it down.
Okay, we have a motion and a second from Harold Nancy. Call those in favor.
Aye.
Opposed? Unfortunately, motion carries now.
One second.
Haven't heard the end of this one.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Item nine. Proposed 2018 water and sewer revenue refunding bonds. We're going to hear a little bit about refinancing that bond now.
Correct. So tonight, what we're recommending is that you authorize the preparation of documents necessary for issuance of bond to refund the outstanding 2007 water and sewer price projects, improve the engagement of NHA advisors as the city's municipal advisor, and Richard Watson and Gershon as bond council, and authorize the city manager to execute the contract with his consultants, and authorize the city manager to select an investing, investment banking firm to serve as an underwriter or private placement agent for the refunding. So, so Craig from NHA Advisors is here and he has a PowerPoint presentation to go over with you guys.
Oh boy, wake that guy in the corner up and let's get on with it.
I don't agree with one that was my fault.
Is there more cake?
Give him a cake break.
I think the cake's out of the egg site right now.
Ready for a second, please.
Nancy's granddaughter, hasn't it? I think she has a pig. Does she have a pig?
Kaden?
Yeah.
Lamb.
So I don't think she gave it to the lamb. I'm sure she sent it to the pigs out there.
So I will start by saying, Craig Hill, NHA Advisors, Managing Principal, that the good news is if you didn't have this debt and the ability to refinance the debt, you would really be only left with option one, right? So if there's a positive that comes out of this, it is that you have a way to control your costs. So the question was asked, is there anything we can do on the expenditure side? Really the refinancing of this debt is, you know, will have the biggest impact of anything.
So you're trying to take credit for saving us money.
Well, I will say that it's a pretty interesting dynamic when you talk about water and sewer. And we have this with, you know, we work with over 50 public agencies throughout the state. And with water and sewer, the big question is, do we just pay things off quickly? Because that's what we would all fiscally responsibly want to do. But when you think about what you're really trying to do is control rates, right? This is all about rate management. You're trying to minimize what you need your 218 to look like. And to do that, it really does say, I want the customers that are using the improvements and to the city manager's comment about relining sewer, these are improvements that the homeowner that's in 22 years, should they not be still paying for the pipes that were done four years ago or five years ago? And it's a policy question. There's not a right or wrong answer, but it's a lot different than saying, we're going to remodel City Hall and we want to put a mortgage on it for 50 years. That's a bad decision, but when it's a user based, it's a, it's a different policy question. So real quickly, what we're going to do is just talk through kind of some of the steps and the mechanics involved in the actual refinancing. And I will start with my disclaimer that while we have some estimates today, we have no idea what's going to happen in Washington DC tomorrow. My four kids broke my crystal ball years ago, so I have no idea what interest rates are going to look like. But the idea obviously would be that we would start, move forward, should the council agree to put documents together so that we can go to market. Okay, so we'll quickly go through a background. We'll talk about the estimated savings, a timeline, and then to the finance director's comment, the financing team. So as you know, you have two series of bonds that are outstanding. They're actually very close together, very, interest rates are very similar. You're paying approximately 300,000 on your sewer and you're paying about $250,000 a year on your water level debt service. You didn't do anything fancy when you borrowed this money originally in 2007. What we have is the option two and option three scenarios. Really when we look at, and this is just for water, so we'll focus on water for a second. Scenario one, which is actually scenario two for what you just talked about for your rates, is not extending the term. So the red dotted line on the left is your current debt service and you could see that just like refinancing your house, we could lower with, with a lower interest rate, we could save approximately 20, I'll say between 25 and 30,000 dollars a year. That's just on the water side. If we are to extend it, you're actually saving about 75,000 dollars a year. And it showed you in the impact on the user rates is, it's pretty substantial between, again, this was option two and option three. For sewer, same scenario, we're talking about 30 to 35,000 if we just keep all of our assumptions the same. If we were to extend it another 10 years, it would go probably between 90,000 and 100,000 dollars a year in savings. So again, this is, this is a policy decision on really not so much what the interest savings are, but what the, you know, what the impact is on the, on the user rates. We in the finance world think about things net present value, what's the, what's the savings worth to us today? Obviously, if you keep the term the same, as an example for sewer, this refinancing would be worth about 312,000 dollars. If you extend the term, obviously you're going to pay more interest over time, it drops down to 180. So you can see that it's got about a one third impact by, negative impact by extending the term. Quick timeline, we're here tonight talking about the option of potentially refinancing as well as setting for, setting forth the 218 hearing for some new rates. The idea would be we would come back in August, have the 218 as well as have the council approve financing documents. We would expect to be in the market probably shortly after Labor Day. So keep our fingers crossed that nothing happens in the, the bond markets between now and the early fall in September. But we would really lock down interest rates in September and be able to report back exactly what the economic and financial benefits are of the financing. The old bonds would effectively get paid off because right now they're callable in early October. So you would still only have two sets of bonds, one water, one sewer. They would just be replaced as of October. As was previously mentioned, what we're looking to do is kind of assemble the financing team. That would include your financing authority. So it's not actually the city, but your Winters Public Financing Authority that's in place already. Our firm as municipal advisor, financial advisor. You have outside legal counsel, which is a bond counsel, Richards, Watson, Gershon. They could also be providing the offering memorandum or the official statement if we need to go to a, a public offering as opposed to finding a single financial institution that could buy the bond. They, we have an underwriter or a placement agent that will need to be selected. We would typically work with staff to go through a RFP process to bring somebody in for that. You've got an existing escrow bank, all they are is simply the custodian that actually pays the investors back and they act as a trustee as well. So they'll pay the old bonds off and then they'll deal in the future with paying for the new bonds. So that's it. Any questions?
Anybody got any questions?
Can you find, can you find a new crystal ball?
You know, I, I put four of them through college. I'm hoping one of them comes back with a new one that works.
I hope so.
All those folks that were listed on that last page.
Sure.
They all get paid. Is, is that cost factored into those net savings that you have projected?
Right. So it is all, it is all built in, kind of thinking like an escrow on your house. They're all paid from the proceeds and the net, net, net is what we're showing you on it.
So how much do we actually get out of it?
Saving wise?
No, what, what, what's total issue?
Oh, total issue size.
Yeah.
I would have to pull that up. I don't have those numbers.
About 13 million?
We're like 6.9.
Six.
So that would be the new financing. It should be pretty close to the same.
So, so if you know anybody that's got 6.9 million dollars.
Round it up to even seven.
If you know anybody that has 7 million dollars that wants to come and talk to us, they, we would give them a swingin' deal because we would be able to save on a number of those people that are listed.
Yeah, we'll cut a few of them out of the equation, right?
Yeah. The school is. The school district thinks I'm nuts, when I'm saying, hey, why don't you go find some people that have some money? This is a, this is really good for somebody's portfolio.
Tax exempt.
It's a, it's a tax exempt bond. And seriously, if there's anybody out there that you know that has about seven mil that is looking for a good investment, I agree with the mayor. If we don't have to pay, that's okay with me. And that money just folds back into doing other things, but seven million bucks.
And you're going to promise to keep the rates high enough to pay back the debts?
The, when, when we did our first redevelopment issue, the night before, I'm, I was up in my office working super late, and I get a call from a guy who works for Fannie Mae. And he had the term sheet that had been sent out by the underwriter. And he and I went through the term sheet on, 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 on the issue, and it was 20, no, 13 million? Yeah. It was like 13 or 14 million dollars. And he goes, well, how about if we just come in and buy the whole thing based on the, the, the rate sheet that you sent out? Sounds good. So we all showed up at four o'clock in the morning because the bonds were going to go out for sale. And, and I'd already negotiated the deal the night before on a private transaction. So we ended up having to pay all these people, even though basically we cut the deal. They, they came in, gosh, I'd like to say, let's say it was 14 mil. So I agreed with them on 13 million. And I forget who our underwriter was at the time, but they just backed in, bought all the paper and sold it on the side market, you know, a couple of weeks later, so. But seriously, if you know anybody that's got seven million bucks, this is a, it's a good way to go. Okay, well, I don't think there's anybody here in the audience that wants to talk about this. I think we need a motion to approve this, right?
Yes, please.
A move that we authorize the presentation and documents necessary for the issuance of bonds to refund outstanding bonds issued in 2007 for water and sewer enterprise projects, and approve the engagement of NHA Advisors LLC and the city's municipal advisor, and Richard Watson and Gershon, in a professional corporation, as bond counsel for the proposed refunding, and authorize city manager to execute the contract with consultants necessary to proceed with preparation of documents required for the refunding, and authorize city manager to select an investment banking firm to serve as an underwriter or private placement agent for the refunding.
Okay. Okay, we have a motion in a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. If Jesse finds somebody out of Rolodex with seven million, you're out, buddy. Yeah. Probably not entirely, just that all of number three goes away. If, if we can get rid of the underwriters, I'm fine with that. All right. Thank you. Moving on. Resolution 201823, resolution of city council, city winners approving the adoption of the 201820 and 1920, 2020 budget.
Hard light reading.
Yeah.
Good evening. So the final thing that I have for you tonight is the 2018, 2019, 2020 budget. So each of you got a copy of the budget, but also before the meeting tonight, I put some things on your desk, which is a page with two colored charts on it, and then the long pages that have things going up as big as I can make them, filled in a long. So what we're asking for tonight is adoption of the resolution that approves the budget. This resolution gives us spending authority for the 2018, 19, 2020 fiscal years. And just like what we talked about at the budget workshops, you have two long pages. One is for the governmental funds, and the most important thing on the governmental fund that we focus on is the general fund. And then the other one is the enterprise funds, which I think we've kind of talked about a whole bunch tonight because it's water and sewer. And we, and those budgets for water and sewer, we'll just get that out of the way first, those do not have any type of rate increase in there at all. So the budget you're adopting with revenues are revenues based on the current rate structure because I can't do projections and pass a budget that you guys haven't approved that's going to be on the various rates and refinancing. So this is a, this will be adjusted when we come back after we deal with the rate increases and after we deal with the bond refunding. We can go back and we can change some of the expenditure side of things with the debt service payments will obviously be changed. The revenues will be bumped up to match what I gave you guys when we started talking about the rates, the one with all those different numbers on them, but I was told there were too many numbers on a single page. So, so that is, there's nothing, nothing has changed on any of this since we had our budget workshop. What I did do on the graphs... So what I did on the graph was I pulled the TOT out separately. The way GFO, CSMFO wanted presented, they have specific taxes that they list out, and then everything gets lumped together, and that's the way it is in your budget. So for you to look at it tonight, the, the color graph with the pie charts has the TOT pulled out separate. So you can see what percent of the budget, the general fund budget as a whole, the TOT is, and at what level we are budgeting those revenues at. Now, the 296,000 is for Abbey House and for the other two hotels. So of the 296, there's about 12,000 that's generated by Abbey House for a year. Excuse me. So about 184,000 is what we think is what I have currently built into the budget for the hotels. And if there's some concern about revenues, this is probably for this current fiscal year, this is probably the area that would fit.
Yeah. What, what we wanted to show here is, is volatility of what we're talking about because it is, is we look at our development horizon on various things, without question, as we look at the, the hotels going in, when they're going to get up and started. Shelley's done a very good job of just looking at the overall, her projections are typically pretty dead on, but the volatility of where the hotels, when they're going to start, when they're going to break down, when they're going to open, what their occupancy, it's a whole new area for us. And I get the concern of the council on this. So as we look at this, we have about $283,000, which for, for the next fiscal year, that looks to, to be the most volatile. And understand that, that especially for the hotel across the street, we use, Shelley used very low numbers. As far as room rates go, she used low numbers as far as occupancy goes. The, 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 the opening of the hotel starts in January, as far as her numbers go. So it's a 55, 55% occupancy at a very low rate. Who knows where those numbers would be? So, yeah, I, I know this is a concern of the council. It's kind of the, we'll cut to the chase, let's talk to the elephant in the room, because the rest of the numbers we think are pretty solid. They are solid.
So basically, like I said, this is, we're projecting small use of fund balance in both years. Those uses of fund balance are directly related to vehicle purchases, mostly for public works and one for the police department, one in each year. So if we weren't buying those vehicles, we would have a teeny tiny, teeny tiny surplus, like, you know, about $7,000. So we will be monitoring the budget, we will be monitoring what's going on with the hotels. And if, if we have to make budget adjustments, we will be coming to you and doing those things. But there's some other things that might happen that aren't in the budget, and so we'll have to see how everything kind of comes together. Tonight, you did two final maps on subdivisions, and I did put some numbers in for building permits for those subdivisions, but then I'm hearing other rumblings about things. So I may have been on the low side of some of the building permits revenues. So we'll just have to kind of really watch what we're doing. You have a staff that's very budget conscious here. We, we don't buy anything that we don't need. We really think twice before we buy something maybe that we even do need. And we, we're really, really careful about spending the city's money. We know that this is the city's money, and we're very cautious. So we will be monitoring this, we will be keeping a very close eye on the revenues and the expenditure side of everything. And if we have to come back to you and have conversations, we've had really good conversations in the past, and we've had some painful conversations in the past relating to the budget. But it, you know, I don't, I don't, I'm pretty conservative in the budgeting on both sides. I'm pretty conservative on the revenue side. I'd rather come back and tell you guys I undershot and things are good, than come back and have to do like I did a year ago and say, those hotels didn't pull their permits, and now I don't have the revenues. And, and I didn't have to come to you that, but we had to cut some positions out of the budget that we had budgeted for both police and fire, and we made other adjustments throughout the organization to deal with that. So I know there's, I know there's some concern with the hotel revenue, and...
Conversely, just some basic economics on some things. Looking where gas prices are going to go is huge for us. If, 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 if gas prices go up just a little bit, you know, let's say that we're looking to cover a couple hundred thousand dollars, the, you know, where gas prices go, it has a very meaningful impact on us if, you know... ...revenues in, in, in a very positive way, because in winters right now, gas is king. Also, there are some things that we've purposely left out of the budget, that there are, there are some developments out there that we think all of a sudden it's going to happen, that we've, okay, let's, let's wait and see.
In two years?
Not confident in that.
No, in, in, in one year. And, and, yeah, we, we're certain that it'll happen in two years, but, you know, if, if some things move up a little bit early, that would be nice, but...
And you have that, everybody I think has seen stories about the people that are moving out of the Bay Area. Well, a lot of them are coming, are, they're just pushing pressure on these developers to see if these houses build and sold. So we'll keep our fingers crossed we'll keep that, pushing them a little harder to get some things done. So again, I'm, I'm budgeting very small, very small use of fund balance for the next two years in the general fund. We've got a whole bunch of things going on in the special revenue funds, so it looks like we're spending a ton of money, but it's all related to grants and things like that. Grants come in cycles. So sometimes we get, and, and the other thing is like TDA funds, we have to collect them, and then we can spend them, because we don't get enough in one year to do anything significant as far as a project is concerned. And typically, we have to combine them with gas tax and TDA fund and grants to do all of those projects. So when you look at the resolutions, it's like we're using fund balance for this, and we're using fund balance for that. Well, in the special revenues and the capital revenues funds, that's totally normal, because in the capital fund, you're gathering all the money from the developers. We talked a little bit about impact fees when we were talking about your wastewater treatment master plan, you talked a little bit about that. But they come in as they build the houses. So we have to collect those, and they set in fund balance, and then all of a sudden we spend it all on a big project. We did that with street money this year. We collected, and we collected, and we collected, and then we missed spotlight. So most of the, most of everything that has fund balances all in the general, is in the special revenue fund and the capital funds. Little bit of fund balance from the general fund. Then we have not really that much of available fund balance in each of the two years for the special revenue funds. And really, we've got a little bit more coming out of the capital funds. So we're not using a whole lot of the fund balance. I included the capital projects in the capital portion of this, and, and a lot of it is stuff that we're getting current money in to be, to spend currently, so we're not using a whole lot of fund balance in the main funds right now. So I'm open for questions.
Any questions?
No, I just, I think it's been good that we've gone over this information several times in pieces, which helps us to digest it a little better and understand where we're going.
A lot of information.
It is a lot. Thank you.
And one thing you guys might want to look at a little bit is there is a future financial forecasting, tenure financing plan in this document. It's kind of, it's kind of rudimentary, but it kind of gives you an idea of what, if we keep everything, doing the assumptions that we're looking at right now, of some of the issues we might be facing in the future. And some of those issues are, we need to continue to work on our economic development so that we have more revenues coming in. But it's interesting, and you can kind of look at where things are going. It shows most of the general fund revenues on a line by line basis, so you can kind of see where we think those are going to go in the future. I know it's not like...
Yeah. Starting in, in July, we're going to have a new economic development committee. A lot of that information is going to be shared with them. And I think personally, I'm, I'm really excited about the, the, the new economic committee. The last one did a phenomenal job and has, has moved us forward. But there, there's a reality, we have to start planning for the future on, on many things. When it came, go time on, on putting together the budget, you know, I, I know that, I tell you, it wouldn't beat up the police and fire departments pretty well over balancing the budget the way that it did, but at the same time, the thing that's great is that we're really solid in these departments, the chief's leadership and, and, and things. He did a great job of representing the department, but at the same time, he was, he was reasonable on things. So we've aligned everything, I think, in a, as best we can, and...
Let's just say I wasn't the most popular person in police and fire.
Yeah.
That's why you don't live in the jurisdiction, right?
That's why she drives a car with a cold plate on it. It says I hard hand, or I hand quilt on her thing, but that's actually a cold plate. You can't run it. You can't run it.
Okay, so I guess we need a motion to do the final adoption of the budget.
I have one comment before making a motion. In terms of estimating our budgets, talking about transportation, there's this movement. It's kind of building to add an extra lane from Hill to Sacramento. And they're going to buy this monster bus to move the barriers to make the lane one way. One side of the rush hour.
They do that in San Diego.
Yeah. They do that in Golden Gate, too.
That's a serious discussion.
I don't think they have a big machine.
Some of our government ones, transportation maybe headed that way possibly.
And for the world-class bike lane? And that includes the world-class bike lane that they're going to?
Yes.
It's world-class.
Structure if they do it. Anyway, it's just something you might hear about.
We're going to take our T D.
Want to do that? Oh, really?
That's what they're looking for.
Not that we get a lot of C Mac, but.
Okay. We want to entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion. I move that we adopt resolution 2018-23, the resolution of city winners approving and adopting a budget of estimated expenditures for fiscal years 2018, 2019, and 2019, 2020.
Second. I'm second.
Okay, we have a motion in a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Posed.
Yeah, I, I will tell you that I think working with Nancy has been one of the highlights of my career. In reality here, she modernized the city clerk function here. We have as professional in a city clerk function and from an admin services, our personnel side is as modern as anybody. And, you know, we'll say nice things about her at your retirement party, at least one more thing. But, you know, I've, I've been in denial about this. She hasn't actually given me her resignation letter yet, so.
Maybe she's not gonna.
Yeah, we're going to tell you something.
I think Piyani's got one, huh?
I'm glad he's doing it. It fills Netflix.
I'm going to tell you something now.
But, and.
I'm glad it waited till then.
I, I will tell you that Nancy really is the cornerstone of this organization. And, and the good thing is, is she's, she's built a very strong foundation from where we're moving from. And our organization needs to feel very blessed because she's left a very strong foundation of the organization, the way that things have been done. And, you know, whoever moves in behind you, you want to leave them a plum. And our organization really is a plum in various things. I, I will share that Nancy, Shelley and I, over the years, we've dealt with a lot of pressure on things. We don't have the pension issues that other cities do. And it's because, you know, we sat down and it was always looking after the best interests of the organization. And I think Nancy's real legacy is the fact that, you know, especially going into retirement. She, she put the organization and the city of winners before her, her own self-interest. So anyway, I'm going to miss, you know, Nancy really is, is a very important confidant. And, you know, I can tell you that being the city manager is, it can be very lonely at times. It really is. And, and the mayor said, you know, she really is the mom of winters on various things and.
You're a help.
Yeah, I, I, I. The amount of times I've had to go in and whine to her on, on various things is, is innumerable. But anyway.
Everyone does.
My, tonight, tonight's very bittersweet. So anyway, cheers.
Thank you very much.
Yeah.
Okay, we'll close the meeting in honor of Nancy's 32 years.
Thank you.
Thank you, Nancy.
John, I have a question, but I didn't want to. For the economic development committee.